Okay, thanks everyone for coming. We will call to order our committee of the whole meeting today. We do have an agenda in front of us. Are there any late items to add to the agenda from councillors? Seeing none. Any late items from our corporate officer? Okay, and we will recognise and appreciate that we are holding our meeting today on the unceded traditional territories of the Sichat and Hoopa Cheset First Nations. Would somebody like to move approval of our agenda? Moved by councillor Dame, seconded by councillor Solder, on the motion, all in favour. Carried, thank you. We have minutes from the meeting held at 6pm on May 15th, 2023. Moved to adopt by councillor Solder, seconded by councillor Dame. Any comments on the minutes? Seeing none. On the motion, all in favour. Carried. We'll go to public input period. Other than people who are booked for delegations today, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address council on topics of relevance to city council and a maximum of six speakers for up to five minutes each can be accommodated. Would anybody like to come forward and speak at public input period today? Come on forward if you want to come up to the microphone and then if you don't mind just stating your name. Yeah, so thank you first of all for coming and for trying to follow process. I think a couple of things there. Number one is if it is 10 to 12 weeks currently, then we'll work on getting our website updated to reflect that. There's nothing that specifically city council can do to help with a permit issue as it's not a council level issue, it's a staff issue. However, our C A O here, Mike Fox, would be happy to connect with you on that. If you want to, if he has a card or you want to leave your contact information, then he can certainly reach out. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Would any other members of the public like to speak? Ellen, come on forward. Thank you. That was at council recently. Mike, do you have any updates on that? Thank you. And there was a development that in the area that somewhat slowed that process down. So appreciate you asking. It's a beautiful design and we're looking forward to having it completed. Okay. Would any other members of the public like to speak today? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our delegations. We have three delegations today and really just want to first of all thank each of the three of these groups for their willingness to come forward and speak on these topics today. And hopefully we can get that mic working prior to the delegation starting. Mine's the only one that's working?
You're the only one.
Oh, interesting. Okay. So we're going to actually just pause until we can get, try to get the mics working if everyone's okay with that, just because I know a lot of people are watching on or planning to watch on YouTube and won't be able to hear any of the speakers. So we'll just take a couple of minutes to try to fix it. Okay, thanks everyone. We're gonna shuffle our council seats around a little bit here to use the microphones that we have that are working. So we're gonna get our delegations to sit at councillor Mealy's desk. So the first delegation we have today is from West Coast General Hospital Medical Staff Association. We have Dr Mark Lambiot and possibly others in attendance as well to prevent an overview of the medical staff recruitment situation in our community.
And to get through the slides, how do I?
They'll start the slides at the back here for you. And then you just can say next slide and you'll...
Okay, great. Fantastic. Okay, great. This is for the slides. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and I thank you for allowing me to speak today and speak to the city council and members and public at large in terms of what's going on at Port Alberni in terms of the medical staff emergency. This is basically enlightened. This is, like I said previously, is not unusual to Port Alberni. This is happening in most sites in the province and in Canada wide, right? And I call it the code blue. For those who knows this is what we call in the hospital when there's someone either die, who has died and we have to resuscitate them, or what they call a rapid response team when something is becoming critical. And I fear that we are quickly approaching this precipice locally, which will require us to step up in terms of community, public, city council, in all arms of our community. In response to this, we had a meeting amongst all the MSA members that was ratified from approximately 30 of us, discussing this very issue in terms of recruitment and retention of healthcare professionals. And that's just what it looks like. You can see there's both doctors and nurses heading towards the emergency. Okay, so while we are where we are, approximately five family doctors to retire in the next five years, and that's an estimate. Some will be longer, some will be shorter. We do know that we have approximately at least several thousand, seven and a half thousand or unattached patients in this area. And again, this is not, this is not an exception in Port Alberni. This is pretty much the rule across the province and in many, many areas. The primary care network, along with the divisions of family practice, are doing something with the ministry's help to provide a care network involving nurse support, more doctors, primary care physicians, who really want to walk into a sort of a turnkey sort of practice where they get support from the health authority and the ministry. Again, this is also dependent on human capital coming in the first place, both nurses, doctors, et cetera, to actually fill those positions. But it's a good endeavour and it's a good place to start. We at this current point have quite a significant nursing shortage, particularly in acute care settings, and that is approximately 40% of our lines in the hospital are not filled. In terms of people actually having permanent employment, it's all been filled by agency nurses who come from other parts of the country to work as agency nurses. And this is because we don't have people to fill them on a more permanent basis. Recruitment retention efforts to date have all been very underwhelming in terms of what they get to do. Most of the time, it's a quick patch. People come and then they leave pretty much afterwards. I've already mentioned medical crisis. The boomer generation is leaving the workforce and this is requiring increasing medical needs. So recent data basically shows that in our area by 2030, the largest population group here will be 64 to 74. This is commenting on the Alberni Calaquit local health area profile. This document, by 2040, this will be 75 to 84, with the population expected to grow by 2.43. I think it's, these underestimate what's actually going on. We'll be good to see the 23% at this point. Further to this, prevalence of chronic diseases per capita in the Alberni region compared to the island health in B C, we're above that. Illicit drug toxicity deaths, alcohol-related deaths, tobacco, et cetera, are at higher rates in the Alberni Valley than any other place in the island or the rest of B C. Hospitalisation rates are here as well are higher than the rest of island health and the rest of B C and emergency visitors. So you can see that we're tending to a vulnerable demographic and we are trying our best, of course, as you know, to meet those needs. Healthcare is also completely centralised. As you know, it used to be a hospital foundation based thing where we did things locally. Now we have to run it by island health and that who runs it by the ministry. So in terms of reaction time, it's not the quickest that we would want. And then, of course, we've just come out of COVID with COVID policies and that's also driven, people have retired early and home murdered, which has added to the burden that we now face. So we did the Survey Monkey survey. This is looking at the docs. As you can see, the majority of them have been working for more than 20 years. And that's the group that's going to be retiring in the next five years. How much longer do you intend to practise in our community? Less than two years is four, six to eight, 10. You can see nine are unsure. And there's the hashtag there, depends on incentives. Why do you think physicians leave our community or look elsewhere when looking for a place to practise? Okay, working hours, and that's pretty much because everyone's doing two people's jobs. Poor group morale, lack of spousal support in terms of getting the spouse to have a job, lack of other work opportunities, transportation. Some of them are not within the realm of us, but some of them we are addressing locally within the MSA and the body of doctors. Poor group morale, working hours, that's again just because we're under extreme pressure in terms of what is required and, as I said, in terms of how busy we are kept. One of the other responses to the widening gap between West Coast General and other local location incentives, Port Alberni's been overtaken, particularly, I understand, Courtney, Cumberland, they're all stepping up, giving a variety of different incentives at the city-based level and regional district to get healthcare workers into the, into the city. Point three, unattractive city centre perceived as unsafe, lack of supportive facilities. Some people look also for private schools, some of that we can't mention, but others we can. And then there's, of course, the never-ending McLean survey. Even when I came here in 2016, if you write Port Alberni, it says the worst town, worst town in, in Canada. Even if you put it in today, it'll pop up, which is something that really needs to be a bit, because when people look to when they come, that report from back then still pops up. I mean, it's not, and you come here and then you realise, well, it's a crock. I mean, it's not, it's not true. And then the last one, which spends to both nurses and doctors in particular, is no childcare support services, which is a huge one. And this is one that is, comes up time and time again, particularly for people that shift work. What attracted to our community was important to choose living and working. These are people. Outdoor activities, I'd like to stress that. Good work-life work balance, great colleagues, welcoming community, schooling, affordable housing, et cetera. What incentives do you believe could help to attracting people to our community? Hotels, stay accommodation, we'll get to that, temporary low-cost housing. There's some sensitives in some places where they're doing sort of rent-to-buy things in certain jurisdictions. Hotels, stay accommodation, or some sort of fixed accommodation for people coming in as locum work. Sign-on bonuses, vehicle rentals for soft landing in terms, you get like a car rental for a couple of months while you find your feet. And then we'll get to the other group. Other responses, some of these are beyond our, the remit of the city and stuff like that. Some are more to the health authority, but the health authority's addressing those. Childcare, again, development of bike trails. This is the generation, the younger generation speaking here, of docs coming in, well-established mountain biking. This is a big thing and this is at several sites, not just here at Port Alberni. Introduction to activities and then hope that the community would invest in improving the town for working class, especially their kids. Again, speaking to the town, and this is stressed all over, go out fishing. The childcare options, information regarding schooling options, going out for fishing, these are all sort of soft things which can be easily addressed. I know the hospital foundation has stood up and given us some money in terms of getting people orientated to this. A lot of people arrive here and don't know what's here. And then they start to stay a little longer and then they start to see, oh my goodness, we've got this, we've got this, we've got this, we've got that. And so, but they don't, they never know from the outset. And this is just a pool of them. I mean, delicious food in cafes. This is just where the generation's moving. Improvement in Port Alberni's potential strengths, parks and trails, mountain biking lifestyle, safer, cleaner spaces, more incentives. Just point there, down to the bottom, safe, cleaner parks, et cetera. This is something that happens on Ninth and I work on Ninth. We're often cleaning up outside our house, outdoors, defecation, needles, all the rest of it. And in terms of health, that's, that's not on, particularly for our patients who arrive in the morning. New swimming pool, better task force, I mean, these are things that we all know, but I'm just showing that this is reflected in the people that we're trying to get here. Competitive salaries, this is not in your remit. So basically, these are just other ones. These are more in line with what the health authority's been told that would be light and these are being addressed at least at the facility level. Solutions, and this is where I'm going to speak to more, is that we've come, so we really like a, like a code blue or rapid response team. This is, we would like a task force. City, regional district, member staff associate, local business and First Nation leadership. I have already put my feelers out to some of these with a very good appetite to start to set on a task force to help because it's going to have to be multi-pronged. The short term, in terms of addressing short terms, these are what they call soft landing packages. What does that mean? That means they come to see the site, they get the sort of the red carpet treatment, they get free car hire, they have a place to stay which can particularly accommodate their families as well, particularly over the summer months, which is where Port Alberni shines in all her glory, in terms of getting people to stay to come and cover those gaps. Car hire, some venture, like adventure stuff. Some people come and give a living expense allowance for the time that they're there to come and see, particularly the ones that we're trying to recruit to stay here. Then the nonprofit organisation fund, this has been actively looked at by the MSA. What this would entail is setting another fund purely for healthcare and healthcare recruitment on the basis of public, business, regional, city support and the MSA themselves to actively recruit doctors and nurses into, into, into our facility. So this will be like recruitment bonuses, et cetera, like on a large scale. I've kind of worked out the numbers, but that's for a different, a different table to actually discuss how much is going to get to fill all our lines in terms of nurses, physicians, et cetera. And then the medium term, redefining and rebranding the world-class health and recreational Mecca, which would be our spot. And again, as you saw there, a lot of them emphasising recreational stuff as a strong drawing point, particularly to the generation that is coming. And then long term, the blue zone, which we can go in at another stage, but essentially it's all health and wellness. There are templates, Boulders and Colorado is one of those such places, which is increased longevity in the elderly, fewer fractures, just general health, term of how the whole town is structured. So I've just spoken to soft landing, free car hire, living expenses, onboarding team. That's quite important, an onboarding team. And when people come to town, they don't know what's available. Pay travel and moving expenses, vouchers, this is somewhat other sites are doing, both for doctors and nurses. So getting back to, I just want to give you the whole idea in terms of, in terms of outdoor recreation, you're probably all aware of this. This is annual total impacts. This is probably from about three, four years ago. It's 1.1 billion direct outdoor recreation spending, economic spin-offs, 662 million in GDP, 300 million in taxes. That's global for all outdoor B C. This was actually done out of Vernon in terms of looking at mountain biking. Best which values the most economic impact is tourism and economic development. But you can see at the top, increase in physical and mental health, enhanced quality of life, community cohesion, improve environmental awareness. So tourism, particularly what we have, would address all the top four in terms of biggest money spenders. We're fully aware in, in terms of the medical community that you need to generate an income stream in order to fund all the things that we would like to have. So this is one of the things that we spent. This is something looking at the economic impact of the See to Sky Mountain Bike Foundation. This was done by a study to look at it. You can see how this added in terms of revenue. You can see at the bottom there, between 2.7 and $4 million injected the local community of Squamish. And Squamish is the closest thing to Port Alberni, is to, Squamish to Worcester is what we are to Tofino. And you can see what this, and this is back in 2006, so this is quite a while ago. This would be obviously considerably higher. Environmental, this is essentially, basically that they were in, this is what they basically did in terms of the environment, they worked with forestry and all stakeholders. Recreation, this is from a study managing mountain biking, IBM's Guide to Providing Great Riding, I put that in bold. Mountain biking appeals to a wide socioeconomic range, from highly educated professionals, which is exactly who we want, to trades professionals and students. Health and fitness, this is a big, if we're going to be to a blue zone in terms of all we have available here, this would be extremely important in terms of the general wellbeing for everyone. And this is the mountain biking, basically brought from that very same study. You can see interest in indigenous culture that was very, very motivated in terms of the group. You can see visitors, 68% of the day, 32% overnight. It's a bit small, but essentially they were spending on average about three grand a day, three grand was their total visit for every person. So that's just satisfaction score. This is, and the net promoter score of 87, it just shows you what the impact is in terms of advertising and where basically the impact that it has. It's a marketing scale to basically... And from, it's a marketing scale to basically show what the impact it has as, to put your community on the map. This is, this is important, mountain biking presence is over there, so it is listed on Trail Forks. So this is an island ride promo. I don't know if I can play it, but essentially, it only looks at the east coast. So from Campbell River down to Victoria with no mention of Port Alberni whatsoever, whatsoever. And this is what the guys are looking at to when they come mountain biking. If you had something infrastructure with 1.4 million cars coming through town, if we get at least 30% of them to stop and ride a bike, you can see what the economic impact is going to be here locally. And the reason we say this is because it's going to help us draw people and sustain them in our community. So we, what we want is we want them to say, I want to move to Port Alberni, where can I find a job? Not, we've got a job for you, please come and stay here and try cell porto. We want it the other way around. And then I understand this is on the go. You're all, you've probably all seen this, because I think Travis and co, who I work with closely at Soca, I here and I strongly recommend that you support that initiative, because that is mentioned in both Squamish and it's a big money spinner for the respective sites that they quote in their document. So in that, that just gives you a brief overview and to let you know where we all are, we all have loved ones, we all have children. We would really, really don't want to reach that point where we have to take someone we love who dear to us to the hospital and no one is there. Right? So we need to help both island health authority to get people here, that would make our job a lot easier. We're doing a lot of legwork in terms of raising, getting people here to work, but we're going to need the city's help. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dr Lambiott. I'll just ask if there's any questions from any members of council. councillor Haggard.
A couple of thanks, thank you so much for coming in today. Is it possible for you to email that slide deck to Donna, because you went through it really quickly and some of the things I missed? And then I can read it more thoroughly when I get home, if that's possible?
Of course, no, absolutely. I was hoping that we could actually set this task force together and just drive this as everyone. I don't expect you all to just take this on for yourself. And I've explained this to the people that are in my community, that we're going to have to step up as well and meet the challenges to build this community as a community, right? So it's going to need everybody to pick up their pants and not expect with a hand open, expecting things. So we're all up for the challenge and wanting to meet this, for everybody's sake, everybody's.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to make sure that people understand, we're not competing, there's just parks for NAMO or Victoria. We're competing for medical personnel with every community in Canada and also the United States, so we're going to have to step up. A couple, one biggest concern that I have is we have elected officials on council and also in the regional district that feel it's not their responsibility to do doctor recruitment. How can I respond to that when elected officials say that? Because I'm pretty passionate about this.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up. Yes, and that seems to be, that seems to be the problem everywhere. We know that the ministry and the health authorities are charged as in terms of their mandate to do that, but the situation is as follows, it is completely overwhelmed, not only here, but nationwide, provincial-wide. The problem is too big for them to do this alone. We as communities, and also bear in mind that this human capital resource of doctors and physician is a limited pool, it is a limited pool. Given that the, like I've said, the boomer generation is now retiring, they're also going to need increased requirements, there's multiple reasons why this problem is too much for the ministry or the health authority to solve on their own. Local places like us, who can improve not only the community for the public at large, but also to make it attractive, is going to assist us in recruitment, to assist us to basically provide care and take in mind that we are now competing with Alberta, who's now changing the post. We've got nurses now going to Alberta and elsewhere, because they're prepared to pay more per hour for their doctors. So this is what we're up against. So as what we can, we need to ask ourselves what we can do locally. It's like the JFK thing, and don't ask what you can do for your country, what you can do for your community, right? So if we can do whatever it takes, building massive, we have a beautiful canvas here in terms of recreational, this is what the new generation wants, if we can just get that done, we won't have to beg them to come, they will come on their own. And that's what's important for us to realise, the short-term goals of soft landings, all these kind of bonuses are exactly that. It is to get us over that hump, so then we have people saying, I want to live in Port Alberni, where can I get a job? And we don't have to give them all these carrots, so to speak. That's the idea, we've got to outflank, it's unfortunately a chess game and we have to outflank the problem and be proactive, not reactive. All too often, we get a crisis or a catastrophe and then we react to it. If we're on a pro, to active stance as a community, we can, we can get ourselves sorted, get ourselves sitting pretty, and it helps everyone. From the homeless person who's struggling with drug addiction to the top guys, everybody will thrive. But we have to do this as a, as a community, basically as a family, we have to do this as a family.
Thank you. I love the idea of a task force and whether this city at a local government level has a direct role in healthcare or not, I think we absolutely have a role. I mean, it is our role to improve the community, to make it a more desirable place to live. We put a lot of focus on that already and I think coming together in a more organised way to hear what you're hearing, to get that feedback and look for ways to implement it in our short-term and long-term planning makes a lot of sense. So I think we can bring that to, I don't know if like the city would be the lead on that, or if you already have that somewhat started, maybe we can talk in more detail about what that would look like.
Yeah, so I mean, it's all stakeholders basically need to be there, and particularly like our First Nations, First Nation communities need to basically be at the table, everybody in terms, and mind you, you know, given our integration of the Medical Staff Association with all these players, we've had these meetings on Wednesdays, as we know, like at the hospital, this can be extended where in terms of policies made or projects that are undertaken, we can definitely give the health benefits slant to that, which is going to be, which is what is being required, right? And you can see, looking at the news or looking at the press, cold water plunges, saunas, intermittent fasting, time-restricted eating, people are already looking at other avenues for, for health. But what is interesting in terms of First Nations, they do really do river plunges, they really do steam tents. A lot of their culture is also based in the health of everything that is now taking precedence in terms of maintaining health, being having proactive healthcare. So we can definitely integrate that in terms of, towards the view of a blue zone. And I don't know if anyone knows what a blue zone is, it's just these communities that have extreme longevity, they have the lowest incidence of hip fractures, they have the highest concentration of syntetarians, people living in excess of 100, and they've studied these areas. And there are templates that can be followed, boulders in Colorado is one of them, that take these steps at a regional district and a council to improve health for the community at large.
Thank you. So I think there's definitely a facilitating role that we can play in bringing this together and adding to complement what you're doing, so that we can be a bit more focused in improving this work. So I have councillor Solder, then councillor Douglas and councillor Neely.
We're going to project here because my mic's not working. Sorry, go ahead. That's okay. No, it's not, I already tried. So.
Use my mic.
Thanks. So in the past, we had Save Our Services, I don't know if you're familiar with that?
I've heard of it.
And that wasn't just, it was a group of residents or community activists that were really involved in doing this, as well as the city and the regional district and et cetera. And it was really successful because they didn't totally save our services, but it was also recruitment with, for doctors. And we whined and dined and did all the things that you were talking about and, and it worked, it did work. So what I'm hearing too is that from other people, residencies, there's a lot of people just finishing, looking for a place to go, like doctors, they've just graduated and looking for residency and they can't find any, there's none. And I've always believed that our hospital would have been a great place for doctors to have residency. Unfortunately, that's not happening. I know there's been the odd time, there's been some, but you know, because I have a son who just finished and he's a doctor in Louisiana, but he won't come back here because he feels that the hospital system, it's broken here. And when you talk about bonuses, they just got bonuses in the States for their, to keep their doctors. And as you are probably aware, they're all on contract, they're not with the health authority or anything like that. So when, when the doctors were here, when they graduate, the younger generation, they're also looking at bigger hospitals, because they want, like he's 11, he's one of 11 internists, so he gets seven days on, seven days off, he only works 135 days a year. And that's what the younger generation wants, as well as what you told about the, the going biking and doing all the health thing, my son's into that too. But coming back is a different story. And there's a lot of people, there's First Nation doctors that I know have gone out of country, as well as a lot of non-First Nations that have gone out of country and they want to come back, but it's just the system, the way the system is, right? But can we not offer more residency?
Okay, yes, I'd like to speak to that. So it's interesting that you bring that up, because as we speak, my colleague Ian Warbrick, who's been, who's sort of the other side, on the right, he's the left hand here. He, and we've discussed as we are actively sort of pursuing the leadership in terms of Simon Fraser University starting the new medical school in Vancouver, with the idea of us trying to become a rural hospital, a centre of excellence. What that would mean is that the emphasis now in their training has to be more broad and they recognise this, because in order to, in order for a physician, internal medicine person to be comfortable here, you're a very different animal to the internal medicine that's sitting at a large centre. I wear many different hats and a lot of the newer trained doctors or physicians don't, are not comfortable doing ICU one minute, doing emergency care, doing cardiac pacing wires, et cetera. So Simon Fraser University are looking for these sites, that would mean some form of an investment by the community to set up a area near the hospital for residency accommodation, which would accommodate both nursing, doctors, physicians and things like that. So we understand, at the moment, internal medicine, we are having residencies come through more frequently now and we are developing a programme at internal medicine. So the idea in terms of getting people, in terms of what we're doing, is to liaise with Simon Fraser University with the expectation of this new hospital, because they now recognise they need to produce more doctors, to get them to come and stay and be exposed right at the residency stage. So that is ongoing.
That's great, thank you.
One more thing, councillor Solder. It's, it's working now. There was a reason why he came over here. Okay, the other thing too is regarding the nursing shortage, I just want to touch on that. So there's a, I sit on the board for some of the senior homes and some of the care aides there would like to do the nursing program, RN program, but they can't get it here in Port Alberni. And it's really frustrating, because they have families and my daughter's one of them, she's going into nursing and she doesn't want to travel to Comox, to NAMO, because she's got a family here, that's quite a, quite a bit of hours there. And she understands going, and some of these other people that are taking the programme, they understand that you have to go out to other hospitals and work and stuff like that. But can that programme not be offered in Port Alberni, in, you know, like the classroom part of it?
So I understand they do their practical component here, not the other, but it's something that should be looked at. I do understand from a nursing perspective that, let me get this, because I've looked this all up. Okay, so for one, I understand from someone that's working in that area in terms of the nursing colleges, they're not filling all their spaces, right? So there is also people not, the younger people finishing high school, et cetera, not wanting to go to nursing, which is something that we can't fix, but that's what's happening. They did a survey about three and a half thousand nurses in May of 2021. At the time, they said 35% voicing interest in leaving profession in two years, 51% of ER and ICU nurses reporting the same. So that's huge. And they say, you know, nurses, what are they saying? Well, what to keep them in, tax incentives, some places would consider like, you know, their rates and taxes are forgiven, they don't need to pay if you're an essential care service provider, general pay increases, which is not within your remit, student loan forgiveness or funding in terms of getting them to come to different sites, right? So in terms of that, it's something I could look and explore and ask some people that question, why there isn't an active college here? Because as you say, there's one in NAMO, there's no one in Cortness and Comox, and then they prove as feeders to the local community. So that's something that should definitely be looked at.
Well, most of the people have settled to go into the practical nursing programme, but that's not what they want. By the time you leave university, you take your, you've started a career and then you go, whoa, I want to go on and go into practice, into RN, but there is nothing offered here.
Thank you. Councillor Douglas.
Thank you, I almost forgot. Thank you very much for being here. It's so refreshing to see somebody come here and want to be so proactive in this field. I just wanted to let you know, one thing, just a little bit of a comment on what councillor Solder was going on there, is traditionally with our post-secondary education institutions here, we've never had proper influence on training beyond LPNs. You know, it's always focused, like your mountain biking thing there, it's always focused on the east coast. And I think that's something we're actively trying to lobby our post-secondary institution to start, you know, bringing those sort of educational opportunities here, really, it's just LPN and there's a couple of other programmes that are popular, but nothing really beyond that, because they've established those training facilities in Comox. And they don't, of course, want to invest more money, they want to take everybody there.
So I, so I think if you, if you take the opportunity that Simon Fraser University and the new medical school and all that being built out now, that's an opportunity for Port Alberni to put their hand up and say, look, we've got exactly the rural site that you need, I've just said in terms of getting people to come and train here, that if we will put our hands up in terms of getting the infrastructure put in, which has got a time horizon of about five years or so. If they already know that, which is what Dr Warbrick's doing, if we, they already know that this is a site that's going to be like the jewel in terms of rural healthcare, it'll be an excellent opportunity to sort of lay on to that nurse training, residents coming and yet that mix in using Port Alberni as the rural site.
That's great, and I know Ian quite well, so a follow-up, but yeah, if we can have an email connection that way, it'd be wonderful to facilitate some more conversation with you and your colleagues about this. The other thing I wanted to mention is, just in case you're not aware, but I know we talked about mountain biking as being a very great sport and it also involves a lot of patrons who are in the upper economic levels of employment. And the other thing we're really pursuing is cleaning up and improving all the public access to our waterfront, which has been dedicated to industry over the last century. So we're really trying to work on that in a number of areas to open that up to public access. And then a further part of that, which we're working on, and our new city administrative officer has also been ploughing into this recently, is kiteboarding, windsurfing, paddleboarding, kayaking, canoeing and all that stuff, right? Which is similar to mountain biking, but the water version of it, so.
Yeah, and I understand like, there's a, it was brought to my attention that there's a big push to sort of get the paving of the railway track from McLean Mill to Coombs and getting that all made out, very similar to, is it the track, there's someone in Kelowna down in the Okanagan, there's a sim of the kettle train.
Yeah, and in Europe and.
Exactly, so if you look at McLean Mill and its financial drain on the coffees, because let's be frank, if you put, if you put that in, McLean Mill, you won't have to put another cent in, because people will be going there to ride. And then the little coffee shops being up, all those little nicks and that, and there's your economy, it becomes self-sustaining, right? So that's also on the cards that I'm aware of and we fully support that. I mean, of course, you need grants, et cetera, like that, because that's again fitting into that hook. And it's the thing with mountain biking and riding, and I keep going on about this, and I'm not a massive mountain biker myself, but I understand that the outlay, the capital outlay to do this is pretty cheap, relative to doing big other things. So the investment by the community is lower and the returns are high. And that's what I want, so that you guys can get your revenue in, you can get the taxes in, you can generate high income to the city, the city becomes richer for it and is able to do other things.
Yeah, and while we have you here, is there anything in terms of actual medical services that you can comment on, such as improved capabilities of MRIs and CT scans in this area, as opposed to having to go to NAMO?
Yeah, so.
Improved echocardiogram services.
Yeah, so.
Bones and fractures, especially if we're talking mountain biking. So any, any sort of complex.
Absolutely, no, no, absolutely. So you know, we build the need and then the service will come, right? So, and I think if we do this together and we raise the footprint of healthcare in the valley, most things happen because of political reasons, never because of, you know what I mean? So if we can use that, use it through a jordas lens, we could definitely promote on that side. And it's ongoing, we're getting a brand-new CT scanner shortly, which is great, with a mobile CT in place, so that'll be the latest generation CT with the ability to do a lot more scans. But I am fully aware. But I am fully aware that if you go back, you can see when it was the hospital board, and how healthcare has completely become centralised, not only at the ministry level, you can see how there's this attrition of services with time. So it's time for us as a group, as a community, as a family, to step up and start to, like, advocate for healthcare in our valley and become more vocal about it.
Great. Thanks for being so proactive, and thanks for your enthusiasm and knowledge.
Thank you. Councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate, I appreciate you being here, Doctor. Thank you very much. My apologies for being tardy for today. So it may have been talked about earlier, and I'll just ask the question, may not be you per se, or somebody here can answer, but where does regional districts fit in this programme? The reason why I say that, obviously, is because all the stakeholders, including regional district, electoral areas, First Nations, are all sitting at that table. Of course, we're going to do what we can for us, and it's going to benefit everybody, but there is a process in place, if I'm not mistaken, and it just, if someone can give me an update.
Yeah, thank you. So the suggestion for the task force had the regional district on it as well, and I think it would be a conversation for us. Likely, regional district is better to lead. However, it might be just a conversation about where the resources are. And I think being cognisant as well, that though there are some First Nations at the regional district table, not all First Nations are there, specifically Sushat and Hupacheset are not participating there. So it might, they might be the conduit to actually bringing together the task force, but the city will have an important role, obviously, in it as well. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Haggar, and then councillor Dean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The other night, the economic development manager and myself took two doctors out for dinner and had this very conversation, what can the city do to, for doctor attraction? And they gave us lots of information, and we took very extensive notes, and we really thanked them for all, for taking time out of their busy days to share their information with us. One of them has family coming in July, and two of them are doctors. And Pat is doing exactly what you suggested, putting together a welcoming package, you know, trying to attract them to our community. We're going to arrange a tour for the high school, because there are high school-aged children. So we're trying to do that. So if you do have doctors or medical personnel coming into our community, Pat, I'm volunteering you, please let us know, because we can certainly put something together. We would like to do anything that we can. Those are easy things that we can do.
So what you're talking to is an onboarding team, right? So the onboarding, you come into the community, here's your point person, they can take you around, they can show you the sights and wonders of Port Alberni, do you know this, 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 and this, and all the fantastic history that is part of this, of Port Alberni, right?
Thank you. And our last speaker, councillor Dean.
Thank you very much. Through the chair. Thanks for being here. This was, this was a really good, informative presentation. I'm just wondering, so you talked a bit about some of these things that can be done that maybe are outside of the mandate or the purview of the city. And I'm just curious, as you've had these conversations with, you know, health authorities and the different stakeholders, what sort of level of, you know, receptiveness and cooperation are they? It sounds like they're overwhelmed with the many issues that are coming up, but, you know, as we talk about, you know, putting together a sort of a quote-unquote action, you know, team or committee or whatever, we're looking at being a part of. Is how, how involved and receptive are the other players here?
Yeah, like, and again, I'd say that this is, they're putting fires out all over the show, right? And this is, and like you said, the word overwhelmed, and I suspect that's the case, is that all sides, I mean, everyone's privy to the news, we know what's going on, I mean, sorry, I mean, you know, Vancouver itself, right? Sanat Benistila closed the other day, this lack of doctors, it's everywhere, right? And I think it would be folly if we, they're trying their best in terms of what they can do, and no doubt inside the realms of the health authority, MSA is actively trying to engage, to put in, to put, like, we need to get these things done. They can only bring things so far, and then they say, oh, look at this, we've given, you know, we've got this stipend, this recruitment bonus, where would you like to work? Port Alberni? Oh, I don't want to go there. Or why don't you want to go there? Because McLean says it's the worst place in Canada. So that's, for us, that's our impediment, right? We can fight here, but the footprint of Port Alberni, or the pre-branding of Port Alberni, that is where we want the regional district, the city council, to kind of look at that, and let's change the perception of the town. Because we all know around, I rocked up, I came here in 2016 and thought, well, the worst place in Canada, let me go and have a look. I mean, is there like a nuclear waste disposal site here, or something like that? Walked around, and I thought, oh my goodness. And mind you, my wife is a New Zealander, I was in Cape Town, South Africa, which is one of the most beautiful places on earth. I came here and I realised, wait a minute, I can surf and ski in the same day? I've got like a hot water lake in the winter, summer, a cold water lake if I want to, I've got the West Coast that starts right here, doesn't start in Yuculitavina, the ocean's right here. So I'm thinking, is there something that I'm not seeing? Exactly, exactly. And if we, if I come, and many others who come from elsewhere in the world with other perspective, we say, wow, what a spot. Or we have nurses who move from Squamish, because they can see the same thing. They come from Squamish here because they were in Squamish, and they saw, this is on the Tavina, I want this lifestyle. Port Alberni's not a hard sell, we just need to leverage it, you know, and get the footprint, and that helps us. So we can get, then the health authority's job is easier. Like, our job is easier, because like I said, we get to the point of saying, people saying, is it jobs for me in Port Alberni? Can I come here? I've been looking for a job. And then we've gone, that's where we want to be, not the other way around.
And if I could just briefly follow up on that, hopefully briefly. So now, being still relatively new to this, is this a sort of thing that, you know, is a high enough priority? I mean, I believe it is, that we would want to consider maybe forming an official committee or something to? My concern is that we need to, you know, stay on top of this and make sure that it's something that the city is, you know, is constantly has its attention on.
For sure. So I think we can't make decisions at this meeting. I would recommend we just naturally bring this to our next regular meeting of council, whether it's someone making a motion at new business, or this report just being forwarded to our next meeting, a regular meeting of council next week. And in the meantime, I think we'll have conversations at a staff level about whether, who has the resources to support, whether through Island Health, whether the city, regional district, or wherever else that might be. So we can put together a little bit of information on, on kind of what that might look like. But I think there's going to be support at all levels to have a task force, it's just about how to make that task force effective, rather than just having, you know, ten people sit around a table and talk about the problem. How do we make sure it's facilitated so that it can be successful?
Yeah, so we also have human capital inside our ranks for this. So the project manager of the facility engagement, which is led by Anna Yord, which is my wife, she is a pharmacist by training and has an MBA, so she's willing to give her a hand. Furthermore, we've got Arna Kitzop, one of the local GPs, who's recently had an MBA. So we do have, and there are others, we do have sort of the human capital within our ranks to assist in this, to try and help the city and the regional district put a plan forward, to try and get this underway.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you so much, Dr Lambiott, for all your time today and your enthusiasm. I know, I think the first time I met you outside a dance show our kids were dancing at, years ago, we had a long conversation about this. So really appreciate your continued advocacy for the community and all of the work that you have done to show physicians in the community that it is, or coming to the community that it is a great place to live. And I think a task force is a natural next step, and just looking forward to seeing maybe exactly what that looks like, but we're excited to take this forward.
Just one more point, I just can't stress the expediency on this, because like we say, we're in a horse race with other places, so the quicker we move, the quicker we can lock down the human capital that we so desperately need. Okay?
Thank you so much. Okay, I just want to check with our tech people at the back. Are all of the mics working again? Oh, fantastic. Okay, wonderful. Then we will welcome up our next delegation. We have Dr Shane Longman in attendance to discuss addictions and mental health in the city of Port Alberni. And Shane, you're welcome, whether you want to sit here or go to the, either is fine, wherever you're more comfortable. We're working again, so, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak about this. I'm going to speak about addiction medicine. I should introduce myself, my name is Shane Longman, I'm a physician here in town, I've been here for fifteen or sixteen years. I previously was a family doc that did emerge medicine, and I stopped doing emerge after like twenty years last summer, mostly because addiction medicine has taken over the vast majority of everything I do. I'm becoming, I'm very passionate about it now. I started doing addiction medicine as a result of a slow integration. Two thousand and eight, there was a tuberculosis outbreak in Port Alberni around that time, and I volunteered to be the tuberculosis doctor. So I would go to the Bread of Life, and I would start a clinic there. And it then became not only people that were at high risk of tuberculosis, but also who had lifestyle or conditions, marginalised care, mental health issues, substance use, all that, it became apparent that a lot of that individual, those individuals required a higher level of care, that care that wasn't being provided in a lot of other areas in our medical system. So I started going to the Bread of Life every Friday, and I've been doing that up until Covid, when it then switched over to the shelter. I guess I've been doing it pretty much every Friday for fifteen years. And in that period, it gradually became apparent to me that addiction medicine was an overlooked component. And so prior to the addiction emergency, the overdose emergency that was made very public five, six years ago, I was, I got my methadone licence and my suboxone licence, these are medications that I use, and others use as well, to help with substance use disorder. My goal of speaking here today is not to ask anything of council. I want to mostly talk about my approach to addiction medicine, I want to talk about my understanding of addiction medicine. I want to be able to provide a base, a foundation whereby if things are brought in front of council in the future, the understanding of why it's important and how it has a larger picture is, can be better understood. So addiction medicine is a mental health issue. It's not a lack of willpower. It's not a matter of someone just saying that, well, I've decided to do this and I like doing it. It's not a matter of someone not being able to, of knowing that they're supposed to be stopping, but they just don't have the moral fortitude to be able to just stop. It has nothing like that. This is a mental health issue. Addiction medicine is, is not one face. It's not the person that is proverbially seen in a certain part of Port Alberni, looking a certain kind of way, pushing a shopping cart, or sleeping in a doorway, or leaving needles outside Ninth Avenue Clinic, or anything like that. That is not necessarily addiction medicine. It's a component of it, but it's not, that's not exactly what it is. There are a lot of people that use substances that you see every day that you don't know. There are for sure individuals in this room and individuals listening whom nobody other than their supplier knows they use. Sometimes they use a very, very small amount. They use a tiny, they've already, they've already gone to the point where they've, where they've tried to cut back as much as they possibly can, but they can't anymore. They use a tiny bit in the morning, a tiny bit at noon after going to work, tiny bit in the evening, and a tiny bit at night, but they can't get any further than that. There's, addiction is something that is very judgmental, of course, but I'd like to change that, I'd like to describe it in a different way. Some individuals, and I'd like to describe the difference between addiction and dependence. Some individuals that use substances, addiction is what's the term, but some is just a dependence. In other words, they use it, but they still have a job, they still have relationships, they still have, they still get by every day, they still contribute, they still coach teams, and they contribute to society, but they use a little bit. Now, what can sometimes happen, though, is that these individuals, for whom this smaller level is present, something like Covid happens. Suddenly, everything shut down from the borders, the supply is not safe anymore. Those individuals now have to get it from a new source. That new source is not something they're expecting. Suddenly, they're not getting enough, or they're getting too much, or the price changes, they are now struggling, they sometimes are missing work, questions are being asked. Partners who knew nothing of the use are now understanding that something is going on, now their life is changing. It's for these individuals that then I can sometimes help. So it's not just the individuals that are proverbially on the street, there's also a lot of individuals for whom it's a chronic use, but not a use that necessarily is affecting them right now. They think they're in control of it, but it only takes a little bit of a step. Now, dependence is still substance use, but if you think of, let's say you were to think of a diabetic that uses insulin. If that person doesn't use insulin, they get sick. They're not addicted to it, they're dependent on it, they need it to be safe, they need it to be healthy. There are individuals that are substance users, for whom I provide a medication such as suboxone or methadone or something like that. And sometimes the suggestion will be is they're just trading one substance for another, one addiction for another. So in other words, you're addicted to methadone, or you're addicted to suboxone. And I argue that that's not the case at all. If a person wakes up in the morning and they take their dose of suboxone, or they take their dose of methadone, well, whereas previously, they would wake up and they'd be in some form of withdrawal, and they'd have to get product. Now, they may have product, but they may need to go find it. In order to find it, they need to have money, so they have to procure the funds somehow, go into their life savings, take the savings or borrow it from someone else, gain it illegally, engage in the sex trade, engage in whatever method is necessary to get the funds in order to get the product. Then they get the product and use the product. The product then impairs their ability to function for a period of the day. Depending on the product, it can last from three to ten hours, something like that, and then they would come out of it and they need to use again. They're afraid of going into withdrawals, they need to use, otherwise, and I'll tell you, I can give a description of what withdrawal is like later on, but I, but they need to use. It's just a rotating symbol, a cycle of what's going on. Whereas if a person takes suboxone or methadone, it's nine o'clock when they take it, at nine fifteen, they say, well, what am I going to do with the rest of my day now? They've got the whole day to then work on the things, the underlying reasons why they were using in the first place. This is important, because the use of suboxone, or methadone, or cadion, or any of the other medications, it's not a cure. All it is, is something that gives someone back their day, so they can start working on the underlying conditions why they were using in the first place. People do not choose to use, for the vast majority of people, they're not using for recreational purposes most of the time. Mostly, it's to escape pain. No one wants to be in pain. If you're in pain, you want to be out of pain somehow. For some individuals, this is their way of getting out of pain of choice. Now, this can be for many different reasons. It can be because of a, it can be because of a lack of role models or mentors, growing up to teach, to understand other options. It can be because it was a gradual process that they gradually learned over time. The underlying reason why how they got there really doesn't matter to me. I just don't want them to be in pain, and I don't want, and when they are in pain, I don't want them to use substances in order to get out of pain. I want them to work on the underlying reasons. If there's underlying sexual assaults as, at any time, or as children, or physical abuse, or emotional abuse, if there's underlying pain of any sort whatsoever, and all pain is equal. If there's underlying pain, I want to be able to give, have them be in a position where they can work on that pain. If that requires counselling treatment, if it requires cognitive behavioural therapy, if it requires something that allows them to deal with pain in a better way, I want them to have that opportunity. But that opportunity only comes if they're not craving, and then if they're not using, and if they're not in fear of withdrawal. So the medications I use, suboxone and methadone, they work, and they work well, but there's challenges. Some of the medications, they all have their pluses and minuses. Suboxone, if you were to give suboxone to an individual who has just used, there's Narcan in suboxone. If you were to give them Narcan, it brings them right out of their, it knocks off the opioid, right off their receptors, and they go into the worst withdrawal they can possibly go into. So I can't do it that way. I have to start them on a tiny, tiny dose, and then every day increase it slowly, till I get to a point where their receptors are all filled. Then we're at a stable level, but that's a lot of days. So I sometimes need to give them other things, like Dilaudid, that I've released every day from the pharmacy. Now, they need to go there, they need to take it. Now, they need to go there, they need to take it every three hours. They can't go to the pharmacy every three hours. So we have to release a larger amount of it every day. And every day they have to go into the pharmacy, but there comes in risk for that, too. There is, of course, the possibility of diversion, meaning that they can either use it in a different way, use it not the way they're supposed to, or sell it, or something like that. So there is a potential for that. It requires my ability to understand which individuals are more likely to benefit from different techniques in order to choose how best to do this. But there is a, and then methadone is another completely different one. I can go, I can start a person on methadone, but I most likely can't start them on a level that's high enough to help them because methadone can change the electricity in the heart and it can make it, put them into an arrhythmia and potentially be dangerous. So we have to start at a low level and then check ECGs and check to make sure they're okay as we go up. The reason why this is important is that, let's say a person's going to need 100 milligrams of methadone to, to, instead of using a certain number of points of fentanyl or of heroin every day. I can't start at 100. I have to start much lower than that. Let's say at 40, or let's say maybe 50. And then every three days, I can go up by another 10. So to go from 50 to 100 is what, six times of three days? That's 18 days. Try going 18 days without using. So they're going to use, but when they use, they then stand a chance of missing doses. It also means that it's really hard to make it there. And if you miss a certain number of doses, you're effectively cut off from the pharmacy and you have to start all over again. You can see how many in some of these, although these medications can work, the barrier is being able to have the person take it every day as it goes up in dose till we get to a point whereby they're at a dose where their receptors are completely filled. They feel good, they feel confident, they feel like they're being cared for, that everything is working for them. But if they live in a place where there's other users or in a place that's unsafe, or under a tree, or in an alley, or if they are in danger of abuse or assault regularly, it interferes with their ability to every day make it to the pharmacy. One of the ways that I sometimes can help, and we do, we, I, it's not just me. I have a big team of nurses and counselors and stuff that help me in this, and I, there's no way I could possibly do, do this alone. So I have a huge team that helps. Sometimes they go out and they find the individuals and they bring them every day. They, they support them. We try with many other, there's many other ways that we try to help the individuals so that we can get up to this, this dose that is needed. But sometimes even then, it's too difficult. Commonly, what I'll do is I'll admit a person to the hospital. If I can admit them to the hospital, and this is if I have a bed, I can go up way faster. Because for instance, with methadone, I can go, only go up every three days because I have to watch the arrhythmias of the heart. In the hospital, I go up three times on the first day. I've got nurses and people all around me that can be watching. I can get them up to a therapeutic value. Instead of 18 days, I can do it in three or four days, or something like that. And then once they're at that therapeutic value, we can have a treatment center set up. We can have counseling set up. We can get them into the system that much faster. But that does require hospital beds. And I often wait days and days and days for a, for a bed to become available in order for me to be able to get a person who is in urgent need, a person that has been unsuccessful in the community multiple, multiple times, or perhaps they are 20 weeks pregnant and it, and it's just going by. Week after week is going by of being unsuccessful. So I try to get them admitted to the hospital to be able to do this. Or someone that has overdosed five times in the last seven days. I need to get them into the hospital before they die. The lack of beds is not something that I'm asking for. I'm just letting you know that that is a huge barrier to me being able to do my job, being able to help those people most at risk from not dying, from not losing their child from, in, as a result of being unsuccessfully being on OAT. OAT is opioid agonist therapy. So if they are successfully on OAT, that individual's care and potential to be able to care for their child goes way up, and that is a much better scenario. I have a lot of success. I don't mean me personally. I mean, it's not my success, it's the patient's success. But amongst the cohort of individuals that I look after, there is a lot of success. The individuals that you see on the, that, that, that make the headlines in the paper or that are on AV chattel box or being talked about or being blamed for various other things, those individuals, it's, it's an unfair representation. There are a lot of successful people. A lot of people have regained everything in their life. They've regained their relationships, their health. They've regained their self-confidence and their ability to return to work. They've regained their future. They've regained their ability to see into the future and to see their place in the future and their ability to contribute to society. Many individuals end up doing well. It does require a large group of people to make this happen, of which I'm only one person. I'm the person speaking right now, but I'm only one person that does all, that is part of all this. But I wanted to let you know that there is a path forward for a lot of these individuals. Now, this matters in many, many different ways. It matters partly from the, the community feeling that, that this group of individuals is a problem and that they are lazy and that they are good for nothing and that they are morally bad people that really just have no willpower. And that's just not true. A lot of these individuals would much rather not be using. They just can't. Now, I'm going to describe what dependence is or what withdrawal symptoms are like. And I apologize in advance if this is something that is not for everybody's ears, but I want to give you a good, good idea of what it's like. So I have an individual who came to me asking to restart methadone. She had tried to restart methadone many, many times. There's always reasons why it was not able to happen. And we tried many different admissions. We tried doing it in the community. We tried doing with supports. And it was unsuccessful many times. She was getting desperate. She really didn't like her life. She wanted me to start her at a higher dose of methadone than is safe. And I said, "I can't start you at that dose." And she said, "But I'm, I'm sick and tired of, of using and I keep missing and I just want to get up to that higher dose as fast as possible." And I said, "I, I want you to be there too, but I, I, I need to do it in a safe fashion." And she says, "You don't know what I have to do to be, in order to be here." She said, "In order to come to this meeting just to see you today, I had to use, but I didn't even have $10 for half a point of fentanyl. So I had to go give oral sex to a guy in order for $10, in order to be able to not, in order to not be shaking and sweating and agitated, be able to concentrate. He had pustules and scabs all over his penis and they came off in my mouth while I was doing this. And I had to do this in order to be able to come here." That, that person's choice was better than withdrawals. Being in withdrawal for a lot of individuals is the worst experience they have ever had in their entire life. They fear it more than anything else, being in withdrawals. It is, I, I presently am, I, the RCMP often call me to come into cells to help. I approached them and said that I understand some people are in withdrawals when they're in cells. So I approached them and we, we, I gave talks to the RCMP and then we, and now when they have someone that comes in, if they feel that the person might be going into withdrawals or might be at risk of going into withdrawals, or if the person just says, "I'm going to go into withdrawals, please call Dr. Longman." So now the RCMP will call me and the guard room will call me and I will go in and I will initiate a program whereby they are not in withdrawals so that when they go in front of the judge or when like that, they actually can speak. And also so that they're not really ill while they're in cells. But there's another component of this, too. And that is, is that some individuals, when they run or when they fight police when they're about to be arrested, sometimes it's not because they're trying to evade justice. It's because they're so afraid of withdrawals. It's such a scary prospect. They would rather fight and, and punch at a policeman to try to get away than to risk being in cells in withdrawal. I've heard this from a number of different individuals now that they've said that now that they know that I go to cells, they get picked up and the first words are, "Can you call Dr. Longman? I'm going to be going through withdrawals. Can you make sure that he comes to see me?" I want to give you an idea of that's how bad withdrawals are for these individuals. When they commit, when they, when they steal, when they, when they live a lifestyle that a lot of us would choose not to perhaps live ourselves, it's not because they're choosing that. It's because they're so afraid of withdrawal. This addiction medicine, so I've done, I've said I've done a merge, I've done family medicine and stuff. And, and there are some really good parts of all the other jobs I've done. Nothing compares to addiction medicine. If you, if I, if you speak to an individual that is, that is using, that really doesn't want to use anymore, if you were, if they were to give an idea of what their life is like out of 10, they might very well say a two out of 10, something like that. I mean, the average person that comes to my family practice, they may range seven, eight, something like that. The average person, when we help a person that is a seven, we might make it up to a 7.2, something like that. We've helped a bit. I mean, if they're in a merge, yes, sometimes it can be more dramatic than that. It can be a big deal. With addiction medicine, very quickly, we can bring that up from a two to let's say a five out of 10. That's a huge increase in lifestyle and in, and in terms of that person's ability to, to, to improvement in their lives. It is the biggest bang for the buck that I have ever seen in medicine is, is addiction medicine. I, I've made a note of how long, I, I could talk for a long, long time on addiction medicine. I'm only just really touching the edges. I'm trying to give you an idea of, of, of the, of the, of the problem in terms of how it starts, but also in terms of how it is something that most individuals would like help on. The barriers, I've discussed in some small detail, some of the barriers. We have got a plan and we have got resources that we are working on to try to make things better. The biggest one is I need another person. As per Dr., what Dr. Lambiot was saying. I mean, I'm the only person that does this in town, that lives here in town. We do have another physician that comes here a couple of days a week, but they look after their own patients. I'm the only physician that does this in town. I'm on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm never not on call for doing this. We need another doctor, just like what Dr. Lambiot was saying. We need someone else to be doing this as well. And, and we need to be able to bring people here somehow and make it attractive enough that they can also take over this because I'm old. I can't keep doing this forever. So I, 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 we have to look to the future to, in terms of making sure that, that we have, as an example of what Dr. Lambiot said, look into the future so that we have a plan on how to continue this kind of thing. I, I'm gonna, I, I have lots, lots more to say, but I'm, but in light of the time and in light of the fact that I said I'd only speak for 20 or 25 minutes, I'm going to stop now, but I'm absolutely happy to take questions, of course.
Thank you, Dr. Longman. Just want to obviously really thank you first for all that you're doing in our community. And I've personally seen the respect that you treat people with when you are taking care of them. And I mean, I know that we have heard about stigma and I think we're going to hear about it, you know, in our next presentation as well. And the relationships that you be, have built with the people that you are taking care of are incredible. And so we're so, so fortunate to have you in our community and we really appreciate all of the work that you do. Before I go to questions from counsel, I'm wondering if you could speak to, you talked about the, the wait to get a bed at the hospital. I'm wondering if you could speak to the need for a detox in our community or a, a community recovery center? And if those, like, are we, are we utilizing a bed at the hospital because we don't have those resources in our community?
So sometimes, yes, we're using a bed in the hospital because we do not have a bed elsewhere. Sometimes those individuals need a bed in the hospital for other reasons at the same time, and we combine both reasons. However, could we have another facility whereby I have individuals that are unsuccessful in the location that they're at and moving them to a location that is safer for them? Absolutely. That would be, that would be such a wonderful thing to happen. I have volunteered to be the addiction medicine doctor for that facility, should that be successful. Not only would be successful from the point of view of, of, of low, of a, of a very low barrier to be able to enter in, but it also means that we would have the mental health resources available such that, as I described earlier, once a person is on a medication such that they are, have their whole day, we have the nurses, we have the counselors, we have the hookup to a treatment center, all moving in that direction whereby they then don't go straight back to an environment which is, which would be very difficult to remain as a non-user. So yes, I think that would be fantastic to have those.
Thank you. Questions from counsel? Counselor Hagard?
I want to thank you for coming in as well today. Through my work with the Community Action Team, I've heard your name several times, but I've never had the honor of meeting you. So it's great to finally meet you and hear about the good work that you're doing. I was also going to ask about the detox facility, you know, if that's what you feel is a need for. But you talked about counseling services. In addition to an addiction physician, is there also a need for additional psychiatrists or counselors in our community as well? Is there a shortage of that, too?
Absolutely. Although we do need definitely another psychiatrist as well, it's the counselors that we are, that in this particular area are most in need of. The cognitive behavioral therapy, understanding the reason why you do the things, why, why you've chosen the path forward and learning how to choose better paths forward in the future. Life will always throw things at us and we will always have to adjust to it. These, these individuals that, individuals that have used, they're going to have challenges in life in the future as well. How they respond to those challenges is the key. So to point, an individual that I know that used to use IV heroin or, or fentanyl many years ago has been successful on methadone for a number of years. Now, one thing that, one thing that people that use have is they have a particular protocol that they've got, a certain way of doing things. And lots of people have their own way. This individual used to have a butcher's apron. And this butcher's apron, instead of knives in it, he had the paraphernalia stuck into the little holes where the knives would go. And he used to put colored electrical tape around the tops. So he'd untie it, roll it out, and there'd be a pattern of colors there. And that's how he used. Now, he hadn't used for, I think it was four years. And he was a patient of mine and he came and told me this story. He said that he was in one of the big box stores and like that, and he was going down the cereal aisle and as he turned to look down the cereal aisle, you know how like Cheerios is yellow? The pattern of colors going down the cereal aisle was the same pattern that he used to use and he craved and he felt like using. That's how deeply embedded in the brain it is that four years later, just the pattern of colors was enough to bring up the urge to need to use. Now, he had gone through cognitive behavioral therapy. He instantly recognized why he felt that way. He had a, he had a strategy of how not to use and a strategy of how to think things through to make sure he didn't use. But it was the cognitive behavioral therapy But it was the cognitive behavioral therapy is what made things successful for him, not the methadone. So, so I guess the two points of that is, that's how deeply embedded your brain is changed when you've used. Having counselling such that you can recognize the changes and not use as an, as a, as a, you know, when a, when a trigger happens, and really, we're not talking about him being assaulted, we're not talking about, you know, some huge life-changing thing, cereal boxes made him feel this way. Imagine, imagine having been assaulted or, or having had a, a financial disaster or a relationship breakdown or something else, how much harder that would be to not use, how much more pain that would be. That's where the, that's where the counselling comes into place and how important it is for these individuals, and not just once, but ongoing. So yes, counselling is huge.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Counselor Douglas?
Thank you, Shane. Really appreciate everything you've discussed, and I think you've really driven home so many points about this. Such a complex, deep issue, and a lot of people, well, more and more people are starting to recognize that this is a health issue. I think our community is ahead of the pack in that regard. As you may know, I've participated in a number of initiatives such as research on this in Portugal twice and in Italy and some facilities down in the United States, therapeutic recovery communities. And I just really appreciate what you've done here to come and, and speak so openly and so candidly about the experiences that people go through, and a lot of people, one of the sayings I felt helped me a lot was developed by the Ministry of Mental Health. You know, these people are our mothers, our fathers, our daughters, our sons, our brothers, our sisters, you know, and they're all us, really, you know, and we're just one step away, or maybe we're not even a step away, as you mentioned, a lot of people in this room, in this facility, maybe going through issues just as such you described. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciated that. There's a little note I saw recently that might tie into something that we can work The recent BC Housing Summit that was sponsored in Vancouver discussed housing potentials for government buildings, either existing ones, future ones, government buildings such as hospitals accommodating housing. And this tied into a program I saw, which I believe was in Portland, where they actually developed housing for people with mental health issues and people with addictions and substance use issues within the hospital or directly adjacent to the hospital so that they could have beds, they could have places to go where people like yourselves could be monitoring them, have quick access to, you know, their electrocardiograms and their, their general health, so they could go through that process quicker than they would on the street. And then the other step, which I've become convinced, is the long-term recovery that's needed for those people. And where do they go? How do they exit? Do they go back to the same part of the community they were living in prior? And all the sort of support systems that a person needs to do after coming through all that. So I want to really thank you for helping open the window so that we can see, you know, a large portion of that a little bit more accurately. One of the other things I'll just mention too is the, the peer aspect of recovery and the peer aspect of, of just helping people in this, and we see this being developed through the, the CAT team that Counselor Haggard mentioned being involved with, and that's really critical as well. So, you know, we're really gonna, I think all of us, council, can say that we're going to really help and try and do whatever we can to, you know, understand the situation and, and do some good work along with the rest of the people, the rest of the community, because that's what it's taking. It's going to take our whole community to help out. So thank you.
Thanks. I agree with the housing, that's essential. If you come from a crack house, you get admitted to the, let's say you are living in a crack house and you break your ankle, you come in and you need surgery to get your ankle done, but while you're there, you start going through withdrawals, you need help, you can't discharge yourself because you can't walk. So I'm called, I help, I gives, I get the person started on Suboxone and dilated at the same time, but then gradually, after they've had the surgery on their ankle, their diluted requirements go down, they're on full dose of Suboxone, they're not in any withdrawals, no cravings, no, no, they're feeling confident, they're feeling good, and they get discharged and go back to living in a crack house. And chances of success go down. So having appropriate housing, and that is actually how a lot of people end up meeting me, is not because they come to see me to start off with, it's because another health concern means that they need to have my help or my help while I am, while, while they're getting another aspect of their lives looked after. And, and that can be multifactorial, but.
Thank you. Counselor Solder?
Just a quick thing. I, I agree with your last statement, housing is really important. Where do you go after you come out of the hospital when you're, but I, I do believe in this, in any community, unless you have a family member or a friend that is going through this process, you don't really comprehend what's going on. And I believe in, let's just use our community, there's not a lot of people that would understand that unless that's happening to a family or friend. And so it takes people like yourself and others who are working in that field to bring it forward and just keep pumping it out there to, so people can understand and face reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Doctor, for coming today. I've just met you and I find you to be a gentleman with a big heart, so I, I appreciate what you do. I appreciate you working and availing yourself through our CMP at the hospital as well. And I appreciate you coming here and being honest and graphic. This is on YouTube, and I think it's something that people can come back to and, and look and, and use it as a resource as well. This is what's happening in our community from the foremost voice on that. I have a question for you. I'll, I'll preface it by saying you don't have to answer it if you don't want to, it's a touch political, but I think if you're here and for what you do, I, I, as a decision-maker, would like the information. We have a notice of motion coming up to a future council meeting to restrict, possibly restrict, drug use on city property. It is something that has happened in Campbell River, if you're aware or not aware. I would just like your take on that. Is that the right step for this council before we get to that decision? Again, you don't have to answer that, sir, I don't want to put you on the spot by any means, but by any means, you're probably the person that I would love to hear about if, if we're going to go in the right direction that way.
Okay, so I, I don't know the underlying reason why the proposal's being put forward, but what I can say is that punishing people for their disease is, I don't think efficacious. I, I think that, I think that when a person, the persons are using, the, many people that are using are already suffering, they're already in pain, they already don't want to be doing whatever. Now, if, if they're imparting, if they're impairing other people's opportunity to enjoy life or their safety or something like that, that's a completely different issue. But if it's purely a matter of just location, I think we look, I, I, I mean, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to make the person's life even harder by, harder than already how bad it is simply because of a location that they're using. Now, and encouragement to be in a safer location, I think is great, and, and for they're going to use. I don't actually put people on, I'm like, I need to say this carefully, I don't discourage people from using in some situations. For some individuals, when I'm starting them on a medication, like for instance, Suboxone or Methadone, I'm fully aware they're going to be using at the same time. So we just counsel them in terms of how to use, how to safely use, get your drugs tested. If you get a new supplier, or if it's a different color, or if it's something like that, get it tested. And if you're not sure if you can't get it tested, do a tiny amount and see what happens. If it's 10 times the potency, at least you don't overdose, at least you, so we give, like, we give counselling on how to use, which is not something I ever thought I'd be doing, but nevertheless, we talk about how to use in a safe way until such time as you're not using anymore. So in, in the case of what you're saying, it's not that I would say, don't use, or it's not that I would say, you know, try to make them feel bad about what they're doing, they don't want to be doing it anyway. I would say, how can we do this in a better way, in a safer way, in a location that is less likely to result in you being, not monitored, but, it, it being pointed out that you shouldn't be there. In other words, if you're going to get picked up, or if you're going to be escorted, or if you're going to be arrested for the location that you're doing it, can we, how about we choose a better site for you? So I would, I mean, I would say that would be a better, I'm, I just don't want to punish people that are already suffering.
Sorry, thank you, Doctor, I appreciate it, and I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I just feel you've got the expertise and I just would love to hear your side of it, so I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, not seeing any other comments. Thanks again for coming today and again for all of the work that you are doing in our community. This has been really helpful information, and we'll tie in next, obviously, really well to our next delegation, so thanks again.
If it does come, if a proposal does ever come up in front of council in which there is a request for input and understanding on why it would help with addictions or something, very happy to come back to answer questions or to be able to help with the, with the understanding of it. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our last delegation today. We have Ron Merk and Ellen Frued in attendance from the Port Alberni Community Action Team to present an overview of the poison-drug crisis in our community. Welcome, Ron, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for having me today. I see familiar faces at the council table and some that I'm not familiar with, and so today is all about providing you, I hope, with knowledge and, and expertise because you're all leaders in the community and you have influence. And so I'm hoping today by giving you some of the information I'm going to talk about, that when you're out there talking to your constituents, you'll be in the position of being able to answer their questions in a logical, reasonable way, couched on exactly what Dr. Longman was talking about, that people with substance disorders are people that have a health condition. And by the way, I'll answer all questions, including those hard political ones. And it's interactive, so rather than just be in a presentation, you know, if you have questions or, or want clarifications, please ask. So I'm going to talk, obviously, about poison-drug crisis, and I was lucky enough that Dr. Longman was here because he set the hook, and now I'm going to reel in the bait, because I am going to ask for some things from you, but they're not going to be too onerous. So just a quick table of contents, this is what we're gonna, I'm going to talk about today, who we are, how, what we're doing, how things are, how, what's happening in the community. Also, I just want to introduce my co-chairperson, I should do that right at the front, Ellen Frued, she's with Sage Haven, she's also my co-chair at the Community Action Team. As, as I mentioned while you were out, Charles, I answer all questions, all, even the hard political ones. Okay? So, Community Action Team, we got a beautiful little logo that we created a few years ago, and it's pretty evident when you look at it what we're about, so it's diversity and helping people. So we're proud to be in, in our community here, you've, both with the Seychelles Nation's land and of course the Hoopishet. Our area also includes basically the regional district excluding the West Coast, so we're basically the Alberni Valley. I'm going through this quick, although, so I want to, before I touch on statistics, I want to tell you some stories, because stories put everything into context, and context is important. So I'm going to start off first with, I talked to a wife last week, and I'm, I have to be careful in these stories, because I don't want to say the story in a way where it would identify people, but this, but, so you'll understand when I'm, I try and stay away from specifics. This wife found her husband dead in their rec room, fairly recently, I'll say in the last year, from an overdose. She had no idea he was using drugs. And to be clear here, and I just want to piggyback on what Dr. Longman said, the people dying are not necessarily the demographic that we think of as the visible minority out on our streets. This fellow was a family man, has a number of children, of course, obviously his wife, because she found him, longstanding community member, was involved in things in the community, providing, you know, services to others, not just himself, and hard-working, blue-collar fellow. So I just need you to think about that. I mean, it was devastating to the family, you can just imagine if you could, if you found the person you love the most in that position and there was nothing you could do. So that's one story. I'll tell you another story, because I, I also talked to a young man, he's more of the example of the demographic that most people would visually sort of attach to people that have substance disorder. His story goes like this, he said, he told me this a, a couple of months back, and he said, his best friend and him did drugs regularly, and by regularly, I mean, four or five times a day. Dr. Longman, I would venture to tell you that people that have serious substance disorder, it's not possible for them to just use once or twice a day, we're talking, you know, more often than that. In this particular time, he had to use the washroom, and he got up and left, his buddy, who was using in an alley, and 10 minutes later he came back and his buddy was laying on the ground, head vomited, was unconscious, and was not breathing. He tried to give his buddy naloxone, because a lot of the people in the demographic I'm talking about, they look after themselves and they have naloxone kits and they look after each other. He gave his buddy three to four doses of naloxone, and in the meantime screaming for somebody to get an ambulance. And of course, when the ambulance arrived, there was no hope, and his friend passed away in his arms. And I mentioned this story because what he told me is he can't get the picture out of his head. So poison-drug crisis affects everybody in our community, it just doesn't affect the people using, it doesn't affect just their families. I'm in this because I have people I care about who have concurrent disorders, active concurrent disorders, and they've been fighting it for years. I saw a statistic recently that said that one in five people in British Columbia today in 2023 knows of or has somebody close to them, they know of, that passed away, they know them personally, one in five people. So we touched on that a little earlier, I think Dr. Longman's presentation and stuff, it's way more representative of our society than, than we think it is. Statistics, just quickly, we lost 28 people in Port Alberni in 2022. I want to put it in context, so I don't, I can't get the numbers because they're not available yet in the coroner's report for other deaths, but in 2020, two years earlier, we lost a total of 385 people in Port Alberni. So if you just mirror that and you talk about the 28 people, and in context to the overall average of deaths in our community, it's incredibly significant, because the representative people in the rest of those deaths are mostly seniors with cancer, long-term aged people. But this crisis hits people, the average death is 44 years old. We're not talking about 80-year-olds, we're talking about 25-year-olds, 35-year-olds, most of them are men, 70% are men. Okay? So right now in Port Alberni, we've lost nine people, that's to the end of April. I know there's more deaths, but officially the number's nine. We're well on the way to meeting the same numbers as we did last year. And just to put it in again, perspective, Port Alberni has the highest or, in the top seven death rates in the province. It's one of the reasons the Community Action Team was formed here in 2017, because we were one of the first six, and the reason we were created is because of the high death rate here. There's lots of reasons, so we're going to talk about some of those. I just wanted to mention though today that the coroner's report came out today for May, and we're well on track to meet the similar numbers as last year, so as of the end of May, we have lost 1,018. So as of the end of May, we have lost 1,018 people in British Columbia. Okay? There's a little tiny bright spot in that. And it would not be fair of me not to mention it. So interestingly enough, since February of this year, except for the month of April, which had a high spike in it, the trend has been tapering off and lowering. Now, it might be too soon to make a correlation, but we're talking about February, March and May. Those three months, the rate of death has dropped from previous years. And as I said, the difference is April, which spiked up. It's not lost on me that February was the month that we decriminalized in British Columbia. So I'm not making a correlation yet, but it's starting to look like something's attached there. Okay? So just continue on. So there are a number of things and I want to mention them because they are important. So it's not like the poison drug crisis hasn't been looked at by many people. And so one of them is a document that was created by the Ministry of Mental Health and Substance Addiction. And it's called "The Pathway to Hope." And I gave this in the information I sent to you. That's you probably have in front of you or you had a chance to look at previously. But the pathway of hope has some very important strategies to solve it. In addition, we have what we call evidence-based medicine, which I think Dr. Longman could talk better to me, better than I can, and I won't spend a lot of time on it. But I will emphasize some of the key points that Dr. Longman mentioned, which is this is not a moral choice. It's not, am I weak or strong? This is a mental health disorder. And we already know from the statistics that we have that people that end up with substance disorder, which I'm going to classify as also a mental health disorder, came into it with some other mental health disorder, diagnosable mental health disorder. That could be depression, anxiety disorder, and some of the psychosis disorders that are out there. And often it's driven by past experiences, trauma that has never been resolved. Okay? So I talked about the pathway of hope. There's two other very important reports. The B.C. Legislative Standing Committee Report on Health Report on November 2022 and also the B.C. Coroner's Special Death Review Panel Report. These three reports together provide the basic foundation of strategies that we can use to address the poison drug crisis. I'm not going to go into them other than to say that there's some very key ones which the province has not stepped up to. And this is going to get to the asks that I'm going to ask you to. Because as leaders and councilmen of Port Alberni, and I will say this before I make the first ask to you, Port Alberni, the city has been, you, the city council, has been amazingly positive towards the poison drug crisis. And I say that in context to some other communities in the province who are diligently trying to apply the old strategies of the war on drugs, thinking that punishment in some way is going to fix this. And of course, we've got literally hundreds of years. And I will say since, I think it's been 52 years as of June today, when President Nixon declared the war on drugs. And in those 52 years, we've seen how well that's all worked out. Yeah, so not saying that there isn't a place for public safety, but public safety doesn't play a role in punishing people who are already sick. Public safety may play a role in finding the people that are providing and supplying drugs, but not to people who have addiction disorder. And I think for some reason, my click, there it is. So I could talk about, I'm like Dr. Longman. I could spend literally hours talking about this, but I do want to just touch on stigma, particularly for those marginalized in the community. But also I want to mention this particularly about the unseen people who use substances. Those are the people I talked about with that story in the beginning. We, by far more people in our community, use drugs in their homes quietly behind closed doors than do on the streets of Port Alberni. And I need to make that clear. And so stigma is ripe across all the demographics, but we see it mostly in the marginalized groups on the street because they're seen as in some way unclean, dirty. I almost want to throw that, you know, in India, they had caste systems. And it's almost like Canada is adopting the caste system and we have thrown in the untouchables to be those people who use substances and we see on the streets. And frankly, those people are the ones that we should be helping the most. So I'm going to talk about strategies to solve the crisis and where you can fit in. So the things that you can do is influence the large government level provincially, which is where most of the change has to occur. I talked about those three key strategy documents. Well, I can tell you that the provincial government has only implemented, if, if at, less than 5% of the recommendations in those documents. So if we have bodies like the municipality councils of Port Alberni and other councils banding together and their voices heard with regional boards like the ACRD and First Nation governing bodies, et cetera, et cetera, you provide influence to the level of government that needs to make the change. And those things that you need to help is be in the position so that you can talk to your constituents, as I am to you today, and giving them the real story of what's behind substance disorders. And then two, when you hear the word housing, push for it in every way in our community. People do not start the journey of healing until they have a safe place to lay their heads. That has to happen every night. And it has to be there for everyone that is experiencing substance disorder with no exceptions. And then we want to talk about detox and recovery centers. So yes, I'm a proponent of a detox and recovery center for Port Alberni. The sooner we get it, the sooner that we'll have Dr. Longman visiting people in the recovery center and he can start that journey with them and get them to a three-day window instead of a 16-day window. But more importantly, the bed will be there when Dr. Longman needs to get a patient into it. So recovery, detox, housing. Every time you hear about those at the higher level of government, it's your opportunity, push for what we need here. I don't know if you've heard the term about complex housing. I was on the committee for the province investigating how we could implement complex housing across the province. So far, we have it in the larger centers, Vancouver, Victoria, Niemöts coming there soon. During my tenure on that committee, I pushed to have a rural community and offered up Port Alberni. However, the government has felt and said that they couldn't finance that. So we are about three to four years out until we get, you know, at the line where the provincial government is going to say we will fund something. My concern is the provincial government wants to regionalize things. And what they want to do is regionalize that complex housing into an Anima center. Complex housing is the type of housing where we're talking about the marginalized people. Complex housing means that you don't get thrown out for any reason. We have the necessary people in place to support you, no matter what your problem is, and we'll work with you until we get you stabilized. And that's why complex housing is so important when we talk about substance disorders. Last but not least, I guess, is just asking you to continue to advocate in every way that you have over the last few years around substance disorders. It's making a tremendous difference in our community. As I talk to people around the province, they often ask me, why is Port Alberni different when they talk about and think about substance disorder? And one of the answers is it's our council. Okay? And I'm going to finish off by just saying that best-in-class countries, councillor Douglas mentioned Portugal, but there are some other really prime examples of best-in-class countries that have addressed substance disorder. They are countries like Germany, Switzerland as an example. Even Uruguay has a really great substance disorder program in place. Every single one of those best-in-class countries that have driven the numbers, and I'm just going to throw out the Portugal number. So in 2022, Portugal has 10 million people in its country. British Columbia has 5 million. In 2022, Portugal had 73 overdose deaths. We had over 2,000. So you can say all you want about whether they've done something that you don't agree with, but the numbers speak for themselves. You don't have to be a mental scientist to figure out the numbers are so dramatically different. And here are some of the things that they have concentrated that make the difference. So there is not just a stop and program for people with substance disorder. They don't have a system where you go into recovery and 30 days later, you go back to your crack house. They have a program where when you come into the program, you're there until you're deemed well. And that means you could be in the program for two, three, five years or even longer. And the program includes housing, counseling, psychiatric services, detox services. And it also includes social services like, how do I find a job? Do I have training for a job? And they actually have work programs where they move people that have taken the training into jobs that will carry on for long term. That's how we change the poison drug crisis in British Columbia. And it won't be until we address all of what I just said in a concentrated, comprehensive way that we will actually start to see the numbers drop. So here we are. Question time.
Thank you so much, Ron. Are there questions from council? Councillor Soltta.
Not really a question. I just want to state that there's so many people in our community that could use complex housing at this moment. And coming here and talking about it at council, I think it's really important because not a lot of people know about complex care housing. And I just kind of went to the government site just to get more insight on it. And yeah, I totally would support something like that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And as you know, we have had conversations with Minister of Mental Health and Addictions about specifically investing in our community for complex care housing. And, you know, here we are. However, I think there is, there's a willingness as that, you know, program needs to expand to rural communities to recognize the need and the challenges that exist in Port Alberni. So we'll continue advocating alongside your groups and other professionals in the community for this type of support. Councillor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ron, for coming to city council. You always inspire me to do better and to do better things in the community. Your passion is, I've never seen anybody so passionate before in my life. So thank you for all the good work that you do. And thank you too, Ellen. You're so inspiring for all the good work that you do. And in between Dr. Longman and you, I did send an email to our CEO to set up a meeting with the Minister of Health and Addictions because we have UBCM coming up in September and we need to start getting those appointments made now. So we're on it. Thank you.
Awesome. Just mentioned August 31st, we're having an International Overdose Awareness Day here in Port Alberni. The city has graciously given us space at the Echo Center. It's going to be a pretty well all-day program. Invite anybody and all citizens of Port Alberni to come. We're going to have lots of tables with harm reduction material, et cetera, et cetera. And we have a guest, a special guest speaker, Guy Felicelli, who is a person who is in recovery but was in gangs and addicted for over two decades. And he'll be speaking. So mark that on your calendars.
I'll send out all the information to council as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Councillor Douglas.
Thanks very much through the chair. Thank you for everything you do and the group that you're involved with and all the work that they do. I'm just wondering if there's, I tried to get ahold of you early in the day, but I think I'll just put the question out because it did kind of rise with councillor Mealy. And I've had some discussions with councillor Haggard about this as well. There are some other communities in the province that I don't feel are quite on the same wavelength as ours. And they are coming up with some, I might kind of consider them knee-jerk reactions to the issue of substance use. And some of those reactions they're coming up with are trying to really, in my mind, replace what the police used to do. And of course, we've heard the police say many times now that, you know, we can't arrest our way out of this problem. It's a health issue. But some communities are trying to do that. And we do have something coming up on our council in the near future. And I'm just wondering, I thought it might be an ideal opportunity for yourself and the CAT team, if there's an appetite for participating in alternative ways of finding solutions. For example, educating people about perhaps a safer area to be or perhaps lobbying for funding to make sure that current facilities such as the OPS site are 24 hours, unlike what they are currently. And or possibly a team of peer workers that could, you know, find funding with assistance from government to go around the community and ensure that, you know, the community is clean and that harm reduction supplies, if they've been left behind, that they're picked up and safely put away. So just wondering if there might be an appetite from your group when this topic does come up, of participating.
Yes, and the answer would be absolutely. And just to answer councillor Mealy's question to Dr. Longman, where the Community Action Team has exactly the same perspective. It would be incredibly unfortunate to punish people more for a health condition that they don't have control over. However, we do recognize and acknowledge that, you know, there are some public places that may not be appropriate. And whether you need an actual bylaw to manage that would be a question in my mind. I think there are much better ways to resolve that. And I would postulate the concept, if people had housing, they wouldn't be doing it on the street. So, you know, what you're doing is you're punishing people not only because they have substance disorder, because they're homeless too. So it doesn't strike me as the most humane method of solving a health problem.
And just further to that, yeah, so that's great. I just, yeah, I wanted to make sure, I was pretty sure I knew that there would be an appetite for participation. So I really appreciate that. So to know that we can reach out to you would really be a help.
Yeah, I just mentioned, John, that we do have a peer coordinator that works with the, that we sponsor and we pay out of our funding. But he's only part-time because we just do not have enough funding. And, you know, if we had more funding, he would be full-time and he'd be out in the community working with people marginalized and helping address best ways to use substances when you're on the street. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. I have councillor Soltta.
Just one, I did come up with a question here for, there's a lot of people that, of course, saying all that, everything that's happening, there's the NIMBY effect, not in my backyard. And of course, with people with And of course, with people with young children and the needles and all that, how do you address that? You know, that's a really big thing. And it's not just in our community, it's in all communities. So how do we address?
Yeah, so I always see, you know, the outcome of people who use substances in the marginalized demographic is the result of a bunch of other social issues that have not been resolved, not the least of which, as I mentioned before, housing. So if we begin to address these other things, then, you know, the paraphernalia that's left behind wouldn't be there. So I'm not a proponent of being reactionary and saying, well, it just shouldn't be, it has to be in somebody's backyard because the situation exists and it's part of our society today. And there's lots of reasons why that exists today in our society, but we have to deal with it now. Trying to bury it or cover it up by pushing people somewhere else just moves the problem somewhere else. Frankly, at this point, I'd rather know where the problem is so that we can send the resources there to deal with, clean up, help those people. If we try and diversify them throughout the community, all you'll do is increase the problem and make it more widespread. And you'll also increase other social issues, including crime, et cetera, et cetera. So just trying to push them somewhere else is not a workable solution in my mind.
Okay. Thank you. Not seeing any other questions. Thanks again for your time today. Oh, and Ellen, did you want to make a comment?
She wanted a couple of comments if you would be so.
Go ahead, Ellen. Thank you. I want to acknowledge Ron, and again, the work that he does because of his passion. He drew me back to the committee after a little break. But I also want to acknowledge Counselor Haggard, who sits on the committee, attends regularly, and brings messages back to mayor and council, which is really important for us to know that we have that kind of support means a lot. I call, I don't call it complex housing, I call it housing first. Housing first means you house somebody first and then you figure out how you're going to help them. And, you know, I know that we, there was a proposal put in to bring a center here to Port Alberni, and it ended up in Oceanside or somewhere. So the philosophy is not to take a look at rural and remote communities. And so as a council, I think the message is that we are unique as a rural and remote community, and our needs are no less great. To send somebody away from friends, family, their social network is not something that we can keep on doing. And, excuse me, if somebody needs help in that hospital bed, we need it now, right now. So I have a story I tell, and I know Deb's heard it, but it's about somebody I knew and coming into our drop-in center. And I talked to him lots, you know, he'd talk about his kids back in Alberta and his life and the jobs that he'd had. And he had a substance disorder. And he lived on the streets and he didn't want to go to the shelter because I don't want to go there because I don't feel safe there. He had all, this is part of the concurrent problems. There were some psychosis, I'm sure, mental health. And he was in the center, and this speaks to the pain that Dr. Longman's talking about. And, I mean, this was a physical pain, and he was doubled over and he was crying. And he said, Ellen, it hurts, it hurts. He was crying, he was crying, it hurts, it hurts. And it was a Friday afternoon, and he had started on the program with Dr. Longman. And unfortunately, he would not go to the hospital for help, and Dr. Longman probably had taken a day off and went away and wasn't available. The only thing I could have done at that point to help him was to give him some money, and I couldn't do it. I didn't feel that I would be the one that might cause an overdose or a death. And so he left our center and he said, I'm just going to go steal something from somebody somewhere so that I can get a fix. Sad story. And, you know, probably about six months later, he died of an overdose. So he wanted help, he had reached out, and we couldn't, within the system and within the facilities that we have, we couldn't do that. So your advocacy as council members, you know, and bringing services here is so critical. And that we are unique and we are rural and remote, and this is a mighty community. I say that all the time. And I know we can do it. So thank you for all you advocate for.
Thank you, Ellen.
Okay. I just want to thank all of the delegations that we've had today for taking the time. This has been really valuable and given us a lot to think about. So some of these items will come, I know we want to talk about task force specifically at our next council meeting. If there are any requests for additional information on this topic, that could come prior to our next council meeting to staff by email, or any notices of motion could be made with our normal process as well. So we are going to switch gears now for the rest of our agenda and move on to unfinished business. So item number one is bylaw enforcement policy, and we have a report dated June 13th, 2023, from our interim Director of Corporate Services, providing the updated policy.
Thank you. Through the chair, so today we're bringing back the bylaw enforcement policy draft for further discussion. Following the last committee of the whole meeting, staff reviewed both the history of the bylaw department as well as the newly released corporate strategic plan. And to sum it up, in 2018, the city went from one bylaw officer to an actual bylaw department. And then, of course, in 2022, they moved into the public safety building. So through a number of tweaks in staffing and responsibilities, the department has been comprised of two bylaw officers, clerical staff, and a community safety manager for a few years. And the number of bylaw files actually remained consistently at just over 1,000 per year, which kind of makes sense because that's basically what our capacity would allow. So of course, any additions or reductions in staffing, you would see a difference in the number of bylaw files that we could process in a year. As well, in preparing for the report for the meeting today, we looked at the corporate strategic plan and highlighted several of the key areas describing how staff feel a bylaw enforcement policy can contribute to building a community where people feel safe, welcome, and proud to live here. Which brings me to the policy. So we didn't actually make a lot of changes overall. The policy is still meant to be a guiding, high-level document for bylaw officers to gain voluntary compliance through education and reasonable progressive enforcement. And they're, these are general guidelines that give bylaw officers the ability to use some discretion, whether the enforcement be complaint-driven or proactive in nature. So we did add section 1.2, which talks about the strategic plan being in alignment with the policy. And then the other change we made was in section 5.9 of the policy. So rather than have an appendix, which is very specific, such as naming actual street names and so forth, we deleted it. And instead, we added the areas that we pulled out of the strategic plan and put it into 5.9. So as an example, parking enforcement speaks to the economy and supporting small business in that when an area is very congested, we would want to maybe enforce parking in those areas. However, we wouldn't focus on parking on a day when there was numerous other parking spots surrounding the area. So it allows the bylaw officers to have some discretion within their day. And another example, through the strategic plan, we talk about a community being aesthetically appealing. So we would look at everything from building without a permit to littering and signage and everything in between. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention is that when we do talk about bylaw, enforcing bylaws, the managers in all of our departments are aware that the city needs to continue to update our bylaws and policies. We did do 21 last year, but we have the ball rolling this year on having more bylaws and policies identified. And I believe we will be coming to council at a future date with some options to look at. I'll turn it back over for discussion.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments from council?
Well, I just want to say that I appreciate the clarification and wording that was added around sort of where it makes sense and the example given around parking. That's exactly the approach that we want to take. We want our small businesses to be supported, to know that customers can freely come to their businesses and without, you know, maybe a vehicle parked there for eight hours. However, in a case where there's multiple empty spots, that's not the best use of our resources. So I'm sure all of the priority areas could give examples like this. So I think this allows the discretion that will give the bylaw officers the freedom to do their jobs as they see fit, but without the need to enforce just because somebody maybe makes a complaint where there's not justification in that sense. So I think, I think this is a great approach, and it was very clear reading through it.
Counselor Douglas.
Thank you. Just, I may have more to say, but it's a specific question. You mentioned, sorry, through the chair, about 1,000 complaints or issues annually? How many years does that go back, do you know? Like in 2012 would have been the same?
Through the chair, so I went back to 2018 when the bylaw department was actually formed because I believe it would have stood to be reasonable that when we just had one bylaw officer, it was probably quite a bit less. So from 2018 to what we reported in 2022, it's in between 1,000 and 1,100 every year.
So we don't have any statistics prior to 2018?
We, through the chair, we actually probably do have statistics through the year. However, I didn't go beyond, sorry, before 2018.
Thank you. And if I can, just, I gather, you know, with the committee of the whole, we're simply forwarding this on for further discussion. So it doesn't necessarily need a whole debate here, but from what I feel, our entire bylaw department needs to be reviewed and reevaluated in its scope and its practices. I do understand we have something coming up in relation to that. But anyway, I'd just like to say that, and, you know, with the understanding we can discuss this in more depth when it arrives at the table of the council.
Thank you. I'll go to our CEO.
Thank you. And I just want to add a little bit of context for our report and through the chair. It's, our, the report would give focus our bylaw on educating the public more. And I believe a big mandate of this council, I've heard it since I've been here, is to make sure we educate the public on what can happen, what can't happen, and why, and the reasons behind it. And I think that currently the staffing at the community safety facility is appropriate for the size of community and what we're trying to accomplish. Now, how we accomplish that is maybe not through finding our way out, but is to educate and make sure that we move forward together in that way. Now, when we're educating somebody, it does take more staff time. So if you are educating and working with somebody through something, that takes multiple visits, multiple times being there, maybe even finding information for somebody. So I just, you know, when, as we review the bylaw area, bylaw isn't just there to do the enforcement. It's, I sort of compare it to when we're raising kids, is it's the right amount of discipline that then changes the behavior that is unwanted and, or in any other sport or anything, that's usually what happens. There's a process to it. And first is coaching, mentoring, training that person to take the appropriate action. So just with that in mind, I want to make sure before we decide to do a deep dive and spend a lot of resources on it, are we spending the time appropriately as we move forward on this, on this topic? But I do think from staff's opinion, we are staffed right with council's direction and having an overarching policy to make sure we're doing it proper. And in council's understanding of what we should be focused on, I think we can make more headway in this department.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Would somebody like to make the motion that's there? Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the committee of the whole recommend council approve policy 3008-1, bylaw enforcement.
Seconded by Counselor Douglas. Seeing no additional comments on the recommendation, all in favor. Carry. Thank you, non-opposed. And on to item F, staff reports. We have one item, and that is sports field, current status, and long-term maintenance. Welcome.
In recent months, council passed two resolutions regarding the status of city-owned ballfields and future repair and maintenance requirements related to city fields. In the report in front of you today, I have outlined a variety of recommended capital projects based on the consultants tour in fall 2022 and have verified those findings with our most frequent user groups. The committee should note that this project list only includes those capital projects, whereas smaller projects such as streamlining our irrigation system will continue to remain in our operating budget. In order to ensure our fields are viable for years to come, staff suggests two next steps. The first being to obtain preliminary costs for those capital projects that are outlined in the report, and to utilize a portion of the growing communities fund to complete a parks, recreation, and heritage master plan. So completing those capital projects will help alleviate our existing challenges with trying to prepare fields each year. And completing a master plan for parks, recreation, and heritage will help council determine what level of service that you'd like to maintain in community. And I'd be more than happy to field any questions that the committee might have.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the report. Before I go to council questions, I'm just wondering if first we could, could you provide an update on the facilities master plan that was funded through budget surplus? And is this different, the parks and recreation master plan?
Yes, so the, further to the director of finance, finances report upcoming there. So the, there's been discussion and budget set aside for a facilities audit that we've been discussing about. So we know that the, our facilities have an average current age of over 50 years each. And so to answer your question, Madam Chair, it would be in conjunction with that. So that idea of we've been, we've been taking some approaches to look at facility audits. There's been some discussion of parks master plans. We've got a national historic site that we're looking at, what does the long-term plan look for that? So that idea with the growing, utilizing part of the growing communities fund would be to supplement each of those. So to start to look at an overarching plan for each aspect as opposed to coming to council over time with, well, let's look at a facilities audit, and then let's look at parks at this agenda, and then something else coming up again and again. The reality is, when we found ourselves in this current situation with the frustration and difficulty maintaining our fields, it's staff's opinion that that's based on not having those plans in place. And so, so this would then supplement that. So this would be in addition to the previous discussion and budgeted line items of things like facility audits.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions from council? Counselor Haggard.
Thank you. You talked about converting our fields from sand, from soil to sand, and there's going to be significant cost to do that. Now, is this something new? And this is probably before your time, but why were they not built with sand in the first place? Do you have any knowledge of that? Or if that's something new, that is, I know things change all the time, or can you just enlighten me a little bit on that?
Through the chair, I think that I'm not completely familiar with, it is before my time. Depending on the age of the field, we've got a different outlay. So for instance, the rugby pitch is sand-based, for instance. Likely, it would have been at the time of construction of fields based on cost typically is how that works. And so as I've outlined in my report, there's some upfront costs to do things like converting a soil-based field to sand. The reality of living in a rainforest as we do on the west coast of B.C. is a very different environment, and I realize that sounds like a basic concept, but, you know, taking the opportunity and investing the dollars to do that conversion, yes, it would shut down fields of play for a season to get that going. Of course, there's some significant cost associated, but those long-term benefits of not having to go through the situation, the reality is, is that, I was just chatting with some user groups in the hallway, that until we take some of those fairly significant steps with irrigation and drainage, we will continue to have these challenges every spring until either mother nature changes or we change our approach. The reality is, it's just how things work in this part of the world. So the short answer to the question is that likely back when the fields were first created was likely a cost implication at the time.
Thank you. Counselor Soltta.
Just to go back to the, just to go back to the sand, are the users okay with sand? Like, is it a good thing? I don't, I wouldn't know that. And other, and the other question is, it's not going to be playable for a year, there'll be, we'll be able to reroute them and put them in other fields, correct? There'll be, we'll be able to reroute them and put them in other fields, correct?
Yes. So through the chair, first of all, the playing on a sand-based field is, it would have minimal impact. So the idea, so again, all of our fields are, we have no synthetic fields that we own. So the one synthetic field is at the high school. So all of our fields are grass. So the reason why I mention that is that playing on a synthetic field versus a grass turf field, that is quite a different feel. Whereas a soil base versus a sand base, so we're just talking beneath the grass itself, is not as different of a feel with the play. So the, by and large, the user groups wouldn't, it's, the user groups wouldn't notice it as much as the condition itself, so the ability for the water to dissipate and drain properly. I've also started the conversation with user groups as well that I think it's important that rather than the city takes arbitrary steps or what may be perceived as arbitrary by community to say, this is the field we're shutting down, and so sorry, user groups, you'll have to move along. I think it's really important that we work with those user groups to, again, build the long-term plan that we can say, here's what fields look like over the next, perhaps 10 or 15 years. Meet with each of the user groups to then determine what makes the most sense schedule-wise, to have the opportunity to fit those user groups in and have most minimal disruption. The other thing I'd like to do as well is, we've discussed the term Sport Alberni for many, many years. And so I'd love to see us back in the situation where we're talking to the provincial sport organizations, like the baseball B.C.s and softball B.C.s, about getting part of the circulation or the schedule to host additional regional, provincial, national championships as well. So, so all good things I would suggest. But again, going back to the question that, yes, we would work with user groups to ensure that anyone who is, who's offset or removed, how does that fit best with getting facilities in pristine condition with the least amount of disruption to the user groups as well?
Counselor Solder?
I just know back in the day, the visitors that used our fields and that were just amazed what we had. And the other question is, master plan. So many communities have master plans. We're the only community probably that don't have a master. Well, not the only, but we don't have one. And I support a master plan. I'd like to see a master plan for our fields. The other question is, when we start working on the fields, what kind of timeframe are we looking at for, to be totally completed?
So through the chair, it would really depend on what level of service we're looking to provide. So that's why when I'd indicated in the report that the benefit of having a master plan is it would help council determine what level of service you want at your facilities. So depending on how, when I use the word pristine, that might mean different things to different people. So determining our mowing schedule right through to that long-term maintenance with aeration and deep tining and coring and all sorts of things like that. So it's really tricky to give a definitive, what the timeline is at this stage because we're not sure the extent of the work we'd like to do. Again, the point of building these master plans is that we can get away from reacting to communities' frustration and get it into a schedule where everyone can see, here's what things look like. And so, again, going back to this disruption of the fields, the user groups as well, is that we'd be able to determine, here's those. So before the work would commence, before we go out to an RFP process, we could determine, here's the work that we're doing in-house versus contracting. And then also, that scope of work, how might it impact those groups? So we can then definitively say, is this weeks, months, or longer that folks would be off the field?
Okay. So just to follow up. So we would look at, if council approved, a master plan and then go to work on the fields? Or we would still be working on the fields as we're doing a master plan? And if, how long would a master plan take? Because we've had studies done, and four years later, I get, we get the study or however. And I don't want that to happen if we're not working on the field.
Absolutely. So through the chair, the, some of the preliminary works on page 29 of your agenda that shows those recommended capital projects, those projects could be, could commence at any given time. So I guess one way to look at it is, could be building the, sort of a two-part system. So these recommended capital projects, these are the types of projects that will solve some of our existing challenges. So if we take on some of those projects now, we could be in a situation where we're not having this frustration with the standing water and drainage, et cetera. We could also concurrently look at a master plan, meaning that long-term. So if the recommended capital projects are projects we do within the next one to three years, for instance, that master plan could tell us what is the next 20 years or more look like. So the answer I would suggest is working on those things concurrently. So rather than saying, we need to go through a whole master parks plan to then begin this work, we already know, we already have a sense of what the existing work would be to get done.
Thank you. Counselor Mealy, and then Counselor Dane?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you through you, Director Thorpe. Good to see you today. First, I'm glad you brought up Sport Alberni because I think you have to know where you want to be to get there and have that goal to get there. And at one point, Sport Alberni was a sense of pride in this community where, yep, you're right. We could have anybody come and have a tournament, provincials, whatever, and we wouldn't have a problem with it. We were like, yeah, come on in. You know, at one point, we were the only community to host all four major games. I don't know if that's still the case now in B.C., but that was a sense of pride, and part of that was our facilities. So I'm encouraged to hear that and that that's going to be part of it. Where, you know, set a goal, and let's try to get back to that. If I may be so bold to ask, how are the fields today at this point? And the reason why I ask is obviously, within the last couple of weeks, we've had tournaments canceled because of the highway closure. And have we taken an opportunity or we've had an opportunity to do maybe a little extra work, if possible, in that time since we're a little short on users coming to the community?
Yeah, absolutely. So through the chair, of course, no good deed goes unpunished. So we were thrilled to be hosting the tournament this past weekend, which was hosted by other communities. Fields are in quite good condition. Just had a conversation prior to this committee of the whole meeting with user groups that are quite thrilled with some of the work that we've been able to get to that we hadn't previously. So we're in a very different spot than we were a few short months ago. Again, still work to be done. And this is where looking to shift the conversation instead of talking about, oh, here comes the spring again, here comes the frustrations. How do we shift that so we can make some good strides to be away from that conversation and toward the return of Sport Alberni?
Thank you. Counselor Dane?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm just curious, so if we were to, if council was hypothetically approve of those capital projects, how would we go about prioritizing? I'm assuming it would happen in a phased sort of situation. And I think that it would be good to see prioritizing, you know, things either, maybe youth first, and then maybe it would be good to look at the, it's really good to see what user groups see each field. But I don't have a great grasp necessarily of the, what quantity of people that represents. And so, yeah, it would be, maybe something to look at. Or I guess more of a question, is that something we would look at in prioritizing? Which fields are seeing the most amount of use? And then look at, you know, whether it's youth or adult or what? So is that sound?
Absolutely. Through the chair, it would be my strong recommendation that whatever decision council makes about levels of service, indicating if there's a specific priority council would like to see. So, for instance, it could be based on, like you're saying, is it based on population? So just the volume of participants on a field is our priority in community? That we focus on youth first is our priority, adults, whatever that might be, or sports specifically? So working with individual sports, all those types of things would come into the mix. My suggestion would be to look at all of those aspects. So making sure that we're meeting council's strategic priorities, to say, this is what council's preference is. And then also staff being able to provide, here's the type of frequency those fields get used and in what seasons. So the work is happening, you know, taking advantage as much as we can of things like the seasons. So when either the weather window itself, and also when those, so minor softball, for instance, finishes in the coming weeks. And so it's a very different situation than if it's fall baseball or rugby or all those sorts of things. So I would suggest, yes, absolutely, we should go about it in a strategic way as opposed to just arbitrarily picking one field and then the next.
Thank you. Would anyone like to read the motions? Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved that the committee of the whole recommend council to direct staff to obtain preliminary costs for the recommended capital projects for city-owned sports fields for council's consideration of future regular meeting.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Douglas. Go ahead.
And through the chair, I just couldn't pass up the opportunity to just comment that, you know, it's a very important issue. So I hope that we're not going to strike out on this one. And it's not something that we can simply walk away from. And so if I could put the ball in your court, just for one brief minute, I wanted to bring back this full circle to what Mr. Lambia was referring to earlier. And this is part of that puzzle. You've done a fantastic job, or you're starting to put together a really comprehensive plan and approach to doing part of that puzzle. So really appreciate it. That's it for the puns. I run out.
That's all the puns there are for this topic. Thank you, Counselor Douglas. Not seeing any other comments on the motion. All in favor. Carrie, none opposed. And Counselor Mealy, if you'd like to read the next one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved that the committee of the whole recommend council to direct staff to utilize a portion of the awarded Growing Communities Fund to complete a Parks, Recreation, and Heritage Master Plan.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Solder. Seeing no comments on the motion. All in favor. Carrie, none opposed. Thank you, Willa. Move on to correspondence. We have one item today, and that is a draft letter in support of an alternative access road from Sichot First Nations. We've all read the letter. Would anybody like to speak to it, comment, give any direction? Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe we should be part of this, obviously. I guess, can I make a motion then? Motion that the committee recommend city council support the letter.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Solder. Any comments? Counselor Dane?
Yeah. Would this be in place of us writing our own letter? Or is that something that we would still want to pursue?
We could do that. That could be, the motion was just to support it. So we could do, write our own letter specifically. Thank you. Counselor Solder?
If, could we also recommend that they send a copy to the AVICC and the UBCM? Just let's fan it out?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think we can take that as a friendly amendment. The only comment that I would like to make is, and myself and Counselor Haggard did have a meeting with our MLA. I don't know what day it was. Recently, it was recently. Whenever it was, it was recent. And the only, so I fully support us supporting this letter and the issues that are identified. The, I think the important consideration for me is that what we're trying to achieve here is an alternative route. I know that we all feel the Horn Lake Connector is the best route. But I think that kind of narrowing in and having us decide that is not the most effective. So I think it's great to write this letter, but I think that the conversation needs to be, how do we get an alternative road out of our community, regardless of what road that is? We want to start a conversation. We know that conversation has started and was started, you know, years ago and has been elevated recently as a result of what we're going through in the community. So I have no issue with signing onto this letter exactly as it's requested. But, and I think largely, writing a letter or signing onto a letter is almost nothing, right? I mean, that's not getting the work done. It's a great initiative to bring the issue forward. And I appreciate Sichot for broadening it out to all of the parties who are impacted and who want to take part in this. But our work is in advocating. And I feel really strongly that when we advocate to the provincial government, and I know we've had conversations with federal government on this as well, and GORD's been a great support, recently talking about this as well, that we don't pigeonhole to one specific solution, but rather we talk about the need to have an alternative route. I think that when you go to higher levels of government with a specific solution that we have determined as people who are not experts on the topic, it becomes very easy to say no. Whereas if we go to the provincial government with a desire to work with them on what the solution may be and be open to their knowledge, we're going to have a lot better results. And I think it's also really important to recognize that over the last, you know, couple of weeks since we've been in this situation, people have been able to utilize the Banfield-Cowachin Road. And largely, that has, we know that there's a lot of challenges with it, and I'm sure we're all hearing about them every day. But the Banfield Road itself is in quite good condition. And that is as a result of a significant investment that the province made in that road following a request that the city, regional district, Huayt First Nations made jointly. So we really firmly went to the province and asked them to invest in that road, and they invested in that road. And we are fortunate today to be able to have a portion of the alternative route out of town that has been deemed to be in decent shape as a result of that investment. So I think that while there's been a lot of frustration in the community over the last couple of weeks around the road and not having access to the Horn Lake Connector, I just think it is important for us to recognize that although we did make a request in 2015 for the Horn Lake Connector, which was not funded, we made a request for the Banfield Road improvements to be done, and those improvements were funded and are underway. So that's just an important piece of this as well. Counselor Haggard?
Thank you. Just to add to that, if I may, at the last regional district meeting, they have brought forward a motion to restart the Transportation Committee for a second route out of the community. So that will be happening. They will bring back the terms of reference in our next meeting. And the MLA did really stress, we need a very collective and collaborative approach. We can't have one group saying we want this and another group saying we want that. We need to work together as a region in order to approach our provincial government for the best route, second route access to our community.
Thank you. Counselor Solder?
Recognizing what you're saying, Madam Mayor, in the past, there was specific routes presented to the government, and it didn't get us anywhere. So, and it was a lot of people working on it, great people working on it. I understand the Banfield Road, and it just is up the pits if you're going the other way. If you're going north of the island, you've got to catch a plane. It takes like how many hours because you've got to double all the way back? And so there's going to be a lot of controversy on that. So it'll be interesting to see what the team comes up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I totally agree. As someone who drove to Vancouver and back this weekend, and someone who actually was part of the Link convoy as a kid, driving with Mayor Trumper and my parents, my dad used to work out Franklin Division. It was really nice to actually drive my mom through all that again to Yuboe and back as we did that when I was a lot younger. It's great to see the Banfield Road improvements. I used to go with the Banfield Director at AVICC and UBCMs. He's always like, come on, I need somebody to come with me. So I would go with him, and he would ask, why is the Banfield Highway? And we would do all this lobbying, it never worked out. And then unfortunately, it had to become a tragedy. And then great work by local government and the First Nations to get that road to where it is. And it is a lot better than it used to be. It really is. But I do truly believe that even though we do have great ideas in this community, and they may all work, is to not pigeonhole ourselves to one route. The fact of the matter is, is that, you know, we're, the political climate has changed because of this accident. And I'm not trying to say that we're desperate and we'll take anything, but I'll take anything. And especially after driving that road, to see it's not for everybody. It really isn't. To see a tandem truck held up by the trees in the ditch and cars in the ditch sawing off trees, it is what it is. But we do need another exit out. And so I agree with you, Madam Mayor, that not to pigeonhole ourselves. We'll just take something, and let's get those talks started.
For sure. And I do think the Horn Lake Connector is the best route. But what do I know? No, but anyways, and thank you. I think it's, this is a great request for us to support. Sichot is leading, and I think it makes a lot of sense. I just think in follow-up conversations that we have, we need to go in open-minded with the goal of getting a solid alternative route out of our community. So whatever that ends up being, short-term and long-term. Okay, on the motion to support the request, all in favor. Carrie, none opposed. Thank you. And we, and one more in the back for in support. Moving on to new business, we have the Growing Communities Fund Grant Priorities Plan.
Andrew?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So today we have the report for the Growing Communities Fund with that, just some history. This is a $5.269 million grant that was from the province. It's a one-time grant, so this was part of their surplus that they had for this past year, with the intent that this was provided based on population size and some growth factors between 2016 and 2021, based on VC stats, not the census stats that come out every five years, so. With that, the principal objective of the Growing Communities Fund is to increase the local housing supply with investments in community infrastructure and amenities. So today, the report seeks to get the support of the committee to provide a planned approach moving forward to use these funds, taking 20% of these funds and allocating that to some of the planning work that needs to be done. Now, we talked about master plans previously with the Director of Parks, Rec and Heritage in her report, but with that, you know, I think there was some discussion also about, you know, studies that we've done in the past that just sit there on the shelf. But the intent of this is to get that long-term financial plan, long-term master plan, everything that we need to bring to council to get that support moving forward with the infrastructure needs. I, you know, I refer back to our infrastructure report, or deficit report that we brought back earlier this year, and the need to really understand what we need to start investing in, and also having that supported by council in a long-term effective plan that we know we're bringing forward, and that would populate the whole five-year, 10-year long-term financial plan, so that we're not bringing back a report saying, oh, we need to start addressing this need, or this, this has emerged as a problem in the infrastructure that we have. We need to do the condition assessments and need to do some of the long-term planning work. So this is a little bit different and a little bit more fulsome and holistic compared to maybe some of the reports and piecemeal work that we might have done before. So this is kind of a game changer, I would say, as far as what we need to do. So looking for that support for that 20%, and then taking that 80% that we have within the remaining funds, which is over $4.2 million. And when we talk about $4.2 million or so, that's a lot of money, yes, but for the infrastructure needs that we have, we do need to bring forward a plan to start addressing our long-term financial needs. And the Deputy Director of Finance will bring a report at our next meeting to talk about reserves and how we need to start populating those reserves in order to start building the reserves to do that long-term work. So with that, we do have some requirements of these funds, and it has to be set aside in a separate reserve. So we will bring a report and a bylaw recommendation forward for that, and get council's support of that over the next two meetings to have that adopted, so we can separate those funds. And we do have to track these funds within a separate reserve, identified separately on our financial statements to ensure that all the funds are allocated to the intent of this grant. And this is a five-year timeframe that we need to keep this reserve, and our reserve policy, not to steal anything from the Deputy Director, but we are bringing forward a consolidated bylaw for reserves, and this one would be a separate reserve because there is an end date with the five-year term. So with that, there is that housing, housing needs component. So every year we do have to update our housing needs assessment and then report back on how we're taking these funds and supporting some of those housing needs in the community. So we do have some funding that has been set aside for our road networking that was decided during the financial planning process of this current year. With that, there was $150,000 that was assigned to that. We also had, as discussed earlier, in the Director of Parks, Rec and Heritage's report, was the Kerry Ford of the, of the $80,000 in total for the master planning of parks and our facility assessments. We know that there's going to be some needs for a condition assessment, some other work, and as I mentioned, you know, that holistic, that larger look at what we need, so that really populates the information that council will have coming forward, knowing that, you know, the risk that we have with some certain assets, and then having those priorities set and moving forward. The storm infrastructure master plan is another plan that we, that we look to, and we see increasing regulations, and we have to anticipate these, these changes because 97% of our storm water is not treated or filtered in a way that, that we anticipate seeing needs in the community as far as our natural assets to retain and start treating this water before we discharge to the environment. Also with waters and sewer infrastructure, I think councils of the past 10, 15 years have done some really good work, as far as separating and having our, our utilities identified and raising funds with utility fees. So water and sewer are doing quite well, and now solid waste. Those are self-funding with utility fees, and that's not identified as using growing community funds because we've populated those reserves, and any long-term planning should come from the fees, as we've seen in our strategic priorities from council from prior and now our current. And also, we mentioned the Parks, Rec and Heritage Master Planning, so a lot more fulsome work that needs to be done in order to give that direction so we can start populating that long-term financial plan. With that, understanding that there's also, as we grow, fire master planning that needs to be done, so that we identify as we grow, as we start to develop, we have some of these, some of these kind of goalposts that are set, that, you know, we might need to consider additional assets as, as we see the community grow. So at what point do we need to start identifying and populating our financial plan with some fire assets as we see growth in the community? And density, also. With that, the OCP, obviously we're working with the OCP, we have needs in the GIS, all this will come together and start to kind of identify what the Growing Communities Funds could be used for with some of these planning documents that we will be bringing forward. So with that, we can have trail standards determining what levels of service we have on our fields, trails, even our streets, having, having plans for the streets that we have a standard throughout the community depending on what type of roads we have, so that it enables that to be understood, and we bring forth the budget based on those standards that we set at one single time, understanding what the needs are for our active transportation network in the community and then whatnot. We are seeing the increased need for natural assets being inventoried and becoming part of, part of our financial reporting, because these are key, key infrastructures that we don't build, but we need to help provide the infrastructure to support storm water mitigation management and supporting our impact to the, to the environment. So with that, and we have so many things to start working on, the planning approach would be the recommended path from, from, from staff as far as moving forward with the Growing Community Fund, and then taking that remaining 80% to allow for the capital works that are the highest priority once we do some of this planning. So with that, I hand it over to the committee for any questions they may have.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Counselor Haggard and then Counselor Solder.
Thank you. I'm very encouraged that staff is going in this direction. I feel that the big downfall of our city, that we haven't had a master plan of what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, so I'm really encouraged that staff is taking this path, that we're going to have a plan now, not just for one department, but for everything that we need to plan for, for now and in the future. So thank you, staff, for doing all this work, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Solder.
Well, I look at it, so many master plans, it's just because we don't have one, and I don't mind master plans, it's just as long as we do something, we actually don't put it on a shelf and we actually work through it, and that's important to me. I also look at, we have aging parks, and I really want that parks, the parks to be really looked at. Like we have River Road, who has sort of a swing there, and Westport needs a park, you know, I hope that's going to be all part of the plan for Parks and Rec, and I'll be, you'll probably hear me harp on it a lot. The, we, as long as our aging infrastructure is really looked at, that's to me, really important to me too, and the pool, as it is to everyone in this community, and I would like to see something put away for, if we can. I don't know if we can, because you say five years or something like that, but if it goes, if we're putting reserve funds, let's take a look and put a little bit away, at least. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Douglas and then Counselor Dame.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion that the Committee of the Whole recommend counsel direct staff to allocating Growing Communities Funds in the amount of $5,269,000 as follows. 20% of the funding to address information gaps in populating long-term financial planning for community growth and the city's major assets. 80% of funding to set specific capital priorities based on the results of the long-term financial planning.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Mealy. Thank you. And Counselor Dame.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just had a question about the master plan process, so I'm happy if we want to finish the, the motion. Okay. I was just curious, so the whole concept of a master plan, is that something, like what's the level of public input that comes into that? Is it, are you mainly basing it on, you know, the strategic plan in the OCP, or are you actively engaging with the public in building those master plans as well?
Madam Chair, excellent question. The public is a key component of this, because that gives the council social license to move forward with the plans as, because these are long-term financial plans, essentially, and that will be populated with the intent and the levels of service that the community needs. So obviously, council needs to have that public input to support the decision-making process. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Okay, seeing none, then on the recommendation to council, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you, Andrew. And item number two, we have the 2024 Permissive Tax Exemption Policy. We have a report from our Deputy Director of Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the report in front of you speaks to a recommendation to proceed with establishing the new permissive tax and places of worship bylaw for the year 2024 to 2027. It's a four-year term, based on the permissive tax exemption policy dated June 10, 2019. So just to give you a bit of background, every four years, this bylaw is renewed. That gives council the opportunity to review the policy and make any changes they would like to see. The policy was last renewed in 2019. We formed a council, or a committee made of council members, with myself and my predecessor, and we did establish some new criteria. Currently, we do have a cap of 1.15% of the animal property tax revenues, as well as establishing a number of different criterias for non-for-profit organizations and charitable corporations as well. So that includes athletic and recreational programs for seniors and youth, service and facilities for persons requiring additional supports in mental wellness and addictions, programming for seniors, protection and maintenance of important community heritage, arts and culture and educational programs, emergency and rescue services, services for the public in form of partnership with the city, and preservation to an environmental or ecological sensitive areas. We did also make changes in regard to places of worship. Places of worship are statutory exempt, however, we did change our policy to include only 0.5 of an acre of exemption for remaining property that surrounds the church. In 2023, we also did approve a 10-year tax, permissive tax for the Island Rail Corridor, and that was the first of its kind that we've done a 10-year bylaw on that. So that kind of summarizes some of the changes that we have made over the years. Staff are recommending that we do put forth the four-year bylaw with the current policy. I did do a comparative again, which you can see in Schedule A of the report, just to see how we do compare to other municipalities, and our policy is still quite robust, and I do get comments also, or other phone calls from other municipalities also, asking how we've gone about things, and a lot of them haven't gone to the extent what we have on our policy, so I can say compared to others, it is a good policy. The other alternative would be to proceed with extending our, our current bylaw for the 2024 period, and then looking at creating a committee and editing that policy for 20 years, 2025 and beyond.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Would anyone like to make the motion, and then we can, Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved that the committee of the whole recommend counsel direct staff to proceed with establishing new permissive tax and places of public worship bylaws for the years 2024 to 2027, a four-year term, based on the permissive tax exemption policy dated June 10, 2019.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Solder. And comments or questions? Counselor Haggard.
Thank you. We had a limit of 1.15%, so are we able to still remain within that percentage comfortably with the organizations that have been approved by this policy? Are we getting close to the limit, or are we denying people because we're going to go over, or can you just maybe comment on that?
Through the chair to Counselor Haggard. You know what? I got some numbers here from 2023. We were at 313,000, and in 2022, we're at 250,000, and I can say that we are around 25% under. It is a good question, as we do see property values rise, and it might be something that we have to consider in the future at what, what places or what priorities council would like to set on that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Counselor Douglas.
Just a real quick one, thank you. You mentioned the change in the acreage, I think it was down to 0.5 of an acre for property of a place of worship. Did you get a feeling that there were many places in Port Alberni that that would have an impact on?
I think about, there was about, I want to say, don't quote me, about five different organizations of places of worship that were affected by that bylaw. But I, besides that, I don't, I don't think there was that many.
And just so I can understand, so for example, if an institution had a five-acre property, previously that would have applied, and now it'll be down to 0.5 an acre, as far as what they can use the permissive tax exemption for, is that right?
That is correct. And just so we have an understanding, that the building itself is statutory, and then it would be, the remaining 0.5 acres would be permissive in addition to that. So they are still granted, you know, 100% permissive on the building and for a portion of that property, but that would be correct, yes. Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Mealy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, I appreciate that. Just, just going back to what we're just talking about, so, and I'm trying to relive my previous years on council. So I remember going, this, this came up, and I remember going to a building that was owned by a local church, and the top part of the building was not tax exempt because they weren't using it for that, so is that still in play? I mean, they're talking 14 years later, but is that still how we look at it? Is if a, a place of worship uses a basement or rents it out for another, that would not be tax exempt, is, am I, if you can get my question?
Through the chair to Counselor Mealy. That is correct. So if you are running a daycare, let's say, out of your, your church, that is classified as non, it wouldn't be considered exempt based under that places of worship exemption. They would have to apply for a separate exemption under permissive taxation if they met the criteria. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing any other questions or comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you very much for the report, and we'll move on to question period. So going to read out this new piece on the agenda. At the conclusion of the proceedings of the regular council meeting and committee of the whole meetings, the mayor or presiding member shall provide time for the public to ask questions of council or committee on decisions or recommendations made during the course of this meeting. A maximum of three questions will be permitted per speaker at regular meetings of council. If an answer cannot be provided readily, the mayor or presiding member may refer the public to the appropriate department or committee for response. Would any members of the public like to ask questions today?
Would any members of the public like to ask questions today?
I asked this last week. I just want some clarification again. Am I understanding this right? Is it saying you can ask questions pertaining to those two articles? But anything else that's not on the agenda is not permissible? I just want that clarity. I can read it in two different ways.
I seem to recall that it was questions about anything at Committee of the Whole and questions about the agenda at council, regular meetings of council.
Yes.
And so if I'm correct on that, great. Yes.
That doesn't, what that is specifying, though it's, it can be read, at least the way I'm reading it, that you can ask questions pertaining to the two items, but nothing else if it's not on the agenda.
Are you referring?
If I'm wrong there, that's fine. I accept.
Are you referring specifically to what's written on the agenda under question period?
Yeah, this would be read out there.
Thank you. So we can, we can update that, because I think it would be more effective to have one for Committee of the Holes and one for regular council meetings as a start, rather than a combined one. So we will work on that.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Mealy, can you just stop encouraging Counselor Douglas with laughing at his little jokes there?
I'll field that question, Madam Mayor. I'm a, I'm a gentleman that likes to do business, but also likes to have a little fun. So at no point was Counselor Douglas foul in his comments or puns.
It's a joke. He was doing the same thing to me earlier on.
I will separate the two of them for the next meeting. Thank you. Would somebody like to move adjournment?
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Seconded by Counselor Mealy. All in favor. Carried. Thank you.